Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I'm going to call this meeting to order, the Sutter Creek City Council on July 21st. Erin, would you like to do a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Cirque.
Here.
Councilmember Gunsman.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Councilmember Faist.
Here.
And Councilmember Reardon is absent.
Can you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
So Mayor, we can probably skip, I don't see the county assessor yet, so we could probably skip that until he shows up.
I'll do the public forum first. Did you want to do the presentations before the city managers report or after?
We can do them before.
Okay. I'm going to open the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments made may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda?
Helen Beers, Sutter Creek. And I'm here once again to talk about getting a siren for the city of Sutter Creek. I'm wondering how many natural disasters the country has to go through with loss of life without us seriously considering getting something for Sutter Creek. In the fire in Paradise, eighty-five people died, and now they have a siren a little late. In Lahaina, a hundred and two people died, and in the floods in Texas, a hundred and thirty-five died and many more missing. Now, there was a small community in Texas near Kerrville that had put a siren in and no life was lost there. We have been to the, my husband and I have been to the fire commission meetings and tried to generate some interest in having a siren. I understand we already own one that was here years ago when I lived here before. Actually, the fire chief's response was that he felt people should stay in place and fight the fire with their garden hoses unless they were old or physically incapacitated. And I do not think that's a viable plan. Sutter Creek is very vulnerable to both fire and flood. I mean, the way the floodwaters came up, it could happen here, and we have a creek right in the middle of town. So I am just hoping that we could take this seriously. In this article that I'm going to leave for you, I'll just, I just made one copy, you can take a look. They put together funding for it through grants from the county commission, from their own budget, and from the local electric utility company which provided a pole for them. So I'm just here, you know, I've been coming for years and trying to get it. The fire chief also worries that the siren would confuse people. But in Lahaina and in Maui, where they tested on the first of every month at eleven o'clock in the morning, everybody knows what that is. So if it went off at some other time, I don't think people would be confused. And enough people would hear it that would be able to evacuate. Also, we've had two scares in the last year. First, the Palis burning down. If the Rocko store building hadn't been there, that whole block would have been gone. And just Wednesday, a fire in the basement of the auditorium. So it can happen here. So please consider it. I'd be willing to help in any way I can on any committee or group discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you, Helen.
Dominic Moreno, Sutter Creek Fire Chief, want to address some of those. So the talk has been about doing alarms for many years. There's a better system out there than alarms. It's the system the county has set up through cell phones, emails, and everything else, which actually tells the people what the issue is. That's what we really need to concentrate on, is getting people to sign up to those systems and literally get involved with those. Because when you put an alarm off, you don't know what it is or where it is or what it is. So you have to go find out where it is through some type of information. So the basically, our thing here is, we don't really have a big flood issue. If the creek's clean, we're not going to flood here. We all know that. That's historically. So I've talked to the city manager, they're trying to get a permit to clean the creek out. Once it's cleaned, our flood issue shouldn't be, shouldn't be much at all. We have too much dirt, debris and stuff in the creek that just needs to be cleaned out. On the, on the thing about people staying behind, yes, I did say that. And historically, when we had the Ranche Ria fire in sixty-one, if the people hadn't stayed behind, Sutter Creek would have burned down. So we can, we don't have enough firefighters to fight the fires. If people do their defensible space, if people do the cleaning, and they're physically and mentally able, they can save their own houses. There was a fire, the fire in Palisades, there was a video, a media group, one in somebody's backyard, they videotaped the fire. And as they're videotaping, they looked over and there was like some kids' toys sitting against the back of the house on fire. They went over with the garden hose, put a couple gallons of water on that fire, left. Came back a couple days later, that house was there. If they hadn't done that, the house would have burned down. When these fires come into these cities, it's like a bunch of matchsticks all stacked up together. You get one going, it gets two going, gets four going, gets eight going, it just multiplies out. If we can break that chain, then we can save our towns. If people, if everybody runs, we're going to lose the towns. That's what happens every single time. Most of the people that die in these fires aren't dying at their homes, they're dying because they're running. They're getting caught out in the open, they're caught out in their cars and everything else is in the process. So the biggest thing we can do for anything is people clean their properties, bottom line. If people clean their properties, take care of their properties, then the problem goes down dramatically. So that's what we really have to focus on. Sirens, we can do sirens. I explained to them, if we did one on Kramer Hill, it'd be a very expensive proposition. There's no, there's no electricity up there, so we're going to have to have some type of like a solar battery generator setup to be able to run the thing. So it's not an easy process to go put these sirens in. We would probably need three for Sutter Creek and one for Amter City to make, if we want to have a coverage. So we do currently have two sirens, but they're just the sirens. That's the cheapest part of the setup. Everything else that runs with them is what the cost is. The other thing you have to do is you have to figure out, how do you, how do you activate the sirens? Either you have to manually activate them, go up there and turn them on, or you have to have some type of internet system that you basically can activate them through an internet-based app or something like that. So it's something we can talk about, but it's, it's the most important thing we can do in this city is everybody clean their lots, take care of their property, take responsibility for their, their property, and we will basically help save Sutter Creek. Any questions?
I just have a comment, and I know we don't have time for discussion, but my father just lost his house in the Palisades fire, and had he stayed behind, he would be dead. And a friend of mine did stay behind and try and fight the fire, and they did still lose it, so I know there is
There is.
community involvement, but that, I don't think that was applicable in that fire.
So there's many, all, we don't hear about the cases of all the people that saved their homes, because nobody wants to do that. There's homes in Lahaina, down in Maui, that literally a block burnt up, but one house didn't, because the guy Steve Irons saved his house. Houses just don't blow up. They have embers that come in, they land, they start things on fire. If somebody's there with the garden hose, again, if they did their work, they didn't do their work, it's a waste. But if they did the cleaning, they did the prepping of their house, they're physically and mentally able, they can save their house.
Yeah, and I don't want to have a debate, but I don't think that's applicable in that fire.
Well, actually, it was. It's applicable in any of these fires, and that's the problem, is everybody's running. There's an old saying, your home's your castle. We build castles to defend, not to run from. So again, we didn't have these bad fires because people stood up. Your dad lit the back fire on the end of town to help save the town. So people stayed behind and did things, and we just don't have that anymore. And we're not, fire departments don't save houses. You know, we can, we can sit there and put five hundred engines in a place, fire departments don't save houses. There's not enough engines to save houses, literally not. Only way we stop these fires is people have to get involved, do all the work up front. If they don't do the work, then that's basically on them. But they have to do the work, bottom line. They do the work, there's a good chance those houses will survive. But most of the houses, they don't do the work. You know, that's another thing, is open space. Palisades had tons of open space all around them. You'd have a row of houses, you'd have open space and another row of houses. It's literally like putting fuel in between all your houses. I've all
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
It's not true. And my father lost his house, and that's all I'm going to say, that that's, it's surrounded by the Santa Monica Mountains and it's a neighborhood. And it was house after house after house.
Yes.
Clear gardens and gardens.
Yeah, so we do have an item later on the agenda, but this is public comment, so thanks.
We actually have two fire prevention items on the agenda coming up, so this is timely.
Helen Beers, Sutter Creek. I just want to say that keeping your property clean is very important, but we don't have any control over the properties around us. We've lost our fire insurance once over a property next to us that was not cleaned. Also, cellphone notification is very important, but at two o'clock in the morning, if you're not lying right next to your cellphone, which is what happened in Texas, you have no idea. Or the cellphone tower could be the very first thing that burns, and that eliminates that. The thing I think about a siren is that it just alerts people that something is happening. They could then go to their cellphone or go to something. And it, it has worked in many places, like in Texas, where I'm going to leave this article. Not one person was lost because they got adequate warning.
Anyone else care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, and again, we do have two items on the agenda today about fire prevention. We're going to skip the city manager's report and start with, which presentation? Okay. Amador County Assessor?
Hello, everybody. Jim Rooney, Amador County Assessor. And I come before each jurisdiction once a year to give you an update on how assessments were in your jurisdiction and as well as the county. And this year, I have some different type of information, which I found very, very interesting. The sort of data we collect, but we don't particularly do anything with. But anyway, for, in last year, the assessments in the county, it was pretty stable. It went up four point one percent. And four point one percent, that's over the past five or six years. That's about the range, that's a little on the low side, but about how much assessments went up last year. And I want to tell, as you probably know, every county in the state is under Prop thirteen. Prop thirteen says assessments can go up a maximum of two percent a year unless there's new construction or a change of ownership. So when the county goes up four point one percent, that means there were change of ownerships or new construction that put, excuse me, that put additional, or added to the assessment roll. I've already submitted all the, oh, good, you have that up there. That shows, last year, Sutter Creek went up about three point three five percent. So a little bit less than the county average. What that kind of means is there, there weren't too many sales in Sutter Creek or new construction. You've had, you have Sutter Crest in the past that new homes come on. Not a lot of activity in Sutter Creek. Sutter Creek has always been maybe the most stable part of the county. Values are relatively high here, and when property values went down strong in two thousand eight and nine, Sutter Creek didn't go down as much as other, other areas. It stayed very stable. So anyway, the thing I wanted to tell you was, gosh, shoot, I printed this stuff, and it printed on front and back. There's a, there's another sheet. I'd like you to take a look at if you could. That, that's it right there. This is the number of single-family residences in the county. Now, it's kind of interesting to me because last year, and the number of residences in the county, quantity-wise, went up two point oh two percent. See that on the far right, upper right-hand corner? Sutter Creek went up to, you know, less than a third of a percent. Now, the thing I wanted to, can you go to, there's another sheet there. I might want you to come back to this one. Well, okay, there you go. On the very bottom left, it says total county. It shows total residences in the county. And in two thousand twenty-five, there were sixteen, fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four. That's up less than a percent from the year before. And that is, that figure the year before was up a third of a percent. I'm sorry, you went to the other, yeah, that one, I'm sorry. So there's fifteen thousand six hundred in the, in the county. Sutter Creek, which is right above that, yeah, has, we have it as nine hundred and seventy-seven single-family residences. Now, there is a column just to the left of that, it says primary. Now, this is very interesting information, at least to me, and that is, a primary residence is a house that a family declares as, that's the house, their main house that they live in. They get a little bit of a tax break, it's called a homeowner's exemption. And in the county, over the past six years, the number of primary residences where people call their main house has declined six years in a row in the county. If you look at Sutter Creek, from twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five, it has shown a decline in at least the last five years of people calling their, their home in Sutter Creek their primary residence. Now, there's probably the same number of families in Sutter Creek and the same number of people. However, less people are calling their home in Sutter Creek their primary residence. Maybe it's their second home, maybe they've rented out their home in Sutter Creek. But it's the same in the county as a whole. And these numbers I find very interesting. I want to tell you, I went to a meeting in Sacramento County between Excelsior Boulevard and Sunrise Boulevard. They have plans for a hundred thousand new homes in that area. In Amador County, over the past year, we had about a hundred and thirty-nine, a hundred and forty new homes total. Sacramento County's talking a hundred thousand in a particular area. It's much smaller than Amador County. Now, almost all the cities are showing the same thing, even Ione, which is the largest city population-wise in the county. It is, it's showing two less primary residences than the year before. Ione has about just under fifty new homes from last year. And you know, when I'm talking about a hundred and forty homes in the county, or fifty homes in Ione, you know, three in Sutter Creek, when you compare it to a hundred thousand planned in a particular area, that's not very far away. It gives you a kind of an idea of the growth in our county. And I was writing something up, a press release, and I bring this to you as an observation. There are, the growth in the county, and I guess this could be considered my opinion, but there is no growth. You could say, you know, there's a hundred and forty homes out of fifteen thousand. Yeah, that is a slight increase, but essentially, we have a no-growth county, and we also have primary residences going down. It's, they're very interesting numbers. And again, I want to say, I'm not saying this as a, this is a good thing or this is a bad thing. This is an observation. And it's data that we have that I thought I would share with you. So that's what I have to tell you. Assessments have gone up. The assessment roll is pretty consistent in terms of property taxes. Numbers of residences, it's interesting, but it's very even. Anyway, that's what I have. If you have any questions, just, Jim.
Jim, you, you live in Ione, and they're showing about fifty-three new houses in the, in town the last year?
Yeah.
The primary residents went down?
Yeah.
What, what do you think is the, that fifty vacation homes were built during that time, or?
Or, you know, there are a number of people who have moved into the area, and it is their second home. But here's another thing, too, which might show a little bit of the reason people aren't declaring them as their homes. A homeowner's exemption, what it does is, you apply for it, it takes seven thousand dollars off the value of your home. And what that does is it saves you seventy dollars a year. They haven't raised that amount in about thirty years. It used to be, you had a thirty-five thousand dollar home, take seven thousand dollars off, that's twenty percent. Now, in Sutter Creek, maybe you have a seven hundred thousand dollar home, seven thousand dollars, I mean, in a sense, who cares? You know, but the homeowner's exemption is important for everybody. If you ever want to transfer your residence to a parent or to a child. They changed the law a few years ago. It was voted in that you will now be reassessed unless it is your primary residence that your parents or your children use as a primary residence. And you know, in a place like Sutter Creek, you could have a home in the family for a long time that's assessed at ninety thousand dollars due to Prop thirteen. It's really worth nine hundred thousand dollars. And that would mean there'd be a thousand percent increase in your assessment for your, your children or your parents. So that homeowner's exemption, it's important to establish it as your primary residence, especially if you plan on passing it to mostly children. So, yes.
Could rentals be the reason for, you know, Jim brought up Ione, where there's fifty more houses and less primary residences? Does that mean some of these homes are being built to rent?
I'm not so sure they're being built to rent. I know people occasionally buy a house, they get a good deal on it, and they do put it up as a rental. You know, I don't, the problem is, we don't keep track of rentals. There's a house there, we know if it's a primary residence. We don't know if people are renting it out. That's kind of a private transaction between two groups. But I think, you know, the price of homes is, is, it's very high. A young couple just starting out to buy a five or six hundred thousand dollar home, four hundred thousand dollar even. You know, the payment's going to be twenty-five hundred, three thousand. It's extremely difficult. And I've kind of been on my soapbox with the county. It used to be, a young couple could, or a low-income couple could go out and buy a property and get permits and water and sewer and build a house. And they could do that for maybe eight to fifteen thousand dollars. Now, permit fees and hookup fees, you're into it a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand before you've broken ground. That's a problem, too. But that's more of a problem for city administrations and county governments. But it's a hard thing to try to solve, but it's a little bit of a different situation. I find it a little troubling that, especially in Ione, Bay Area people sell their homes for a million, million one, million two, come to our area, buy for four or five hundred thousand, bring their assessed value from the Bay Area of a hundred thousand, and they get a very beneficial tax status, tax assessment, on top of that eight or nine hundred thousand dollar gain. But again, that's the Prop nineteen that was voted in by the populace a few years ago. Sorry, I don't mean to bring all bad news here. But anyway, these are, these are things that we deal with every day. And I just wanted to, of course, tell you about your assessments, but let you know about the quantities of homes, quantities of houses, and kind of the type of family that's living in them. Any other questions?
The public have any questions for Jim?
I always like to say that if you have any questions or concerns, call and ask for me. If you have problems, call and ask for Jeff.
Thanks for your time, Jim.
Thank you a lot, and I'll see you all next year. All right, thanks.
Thank you for your insight. Next, we're going to hear from Larry McKinney from the Water Agency.
Can I just make a comment about that real quick?
Oh, yep.
I've been talking about this for many years. I actually talked to the city manager about it. You go down Badger Street on a Tuesday, there's hardly any cars there. You go down on Thursday, Friday, there's a bunch of cars there. And what we're seeing on, as our call volume, is there's a lot of people in the Bay Area buying as a second home, and then they're basically leaving it empty, and they come up either every weekend or every other weekend. And what that does is, we just had a call the other day off Car San, and I asked about Ms. Kay's house. And she says, two people in the Bay Area buy it, and they come up out twice a month, and it just sits there empty the whole rest of the time. So what's happening is, is we're creating these second homes. People are coming up safe in the Bay Area, they're stopping shopping in, in Sacramento or whatever, filling up their cars, they're coming up here, coming up for a Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and going back down to the Bay Area. So they're, they're not contributing as much as other families into the system. And since they're living in the Bay Area, that's their primary homes down there. So we're having more and more of these homes in Sutter Creek that are empty a lot of the time. South Lake Tahoe, was it two years ago, South Lake Tahoe wanted to put a six thousand dollar per-house fee on homes that weren't, weren't occupied more than six months out of the year. Do you guys remember that? It was a big old deal. At the time, I said, man, that's, that's wrong and everything else, but then I figured out what's happened. They have the same problem. They have thousands and thousands of homes that sit empty up there. So there's nobody putting, buying stuff at the local hardware stores or going out to restaurants or anything else. So there's not a lot of money going back in the system, even though the roads still have to be fixed, the sewer systems have to be fixed, all this stuff has to still be fixed. So I think that's something we're seeing in the foothills, is their second homes, and they're basically just coming up once in a while to visit and stuff like that.
Thank you, Dominic. Thanks, Dominic. Thanks, Don Nick.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. I'm Larry McKinney, the general manager of the Amador Water Agency. I think I've met all of you before, but it's been a while since I came and talked to the council. And there's two things that I want to update you on this evening. One is just the status of the Tanner Water Treatment Plant, the capacity issue we've been having there and how we're doing with that, what we're doing about it. And then I wanted to let you know about the rate study that we're doing currently. With regard to Tanner capacity, you probably remember that I came here a few years ago and I talked about the fact that the Tanner Water Treatment Plant, which serves Jackson and Sutter Creek, Amador City, Drytown, Plymouth and the unincorporated area and that middle area of the county was pretty much at its capacity. The plant is licensed at 6 million gallons a day. But currently our maximum capacity that it can produce is slightly over 5 million gallons a day. And if you do a computation of what we call reliable capacity, which is what we're supposed to operate within, meaning that there's some component of the plant that's out of order, being repaired or whatever, and the plant can then produce a little over four and a half million gallons a day. And a couple of years ago, we were at the point where we were right up against the 5 million gallon a day maximum capacity. And we just hoped every summer that we didn't have any outage. So we undertook several projects over the last couple of years with operating funds. We made some improvements to the plant to remove some bottlenecks. And a year and a half, two years ago, we were able to say that we were operating just within reliable capacity. We had improved considerably, but we had a pretty small amount of reliable capacity then remaining. At that point, my board of directors adopted a resolution that established a special allocation procedure for that remaining capacity because it was so small. In the past, we've always had a first come, first served system. People come in and apply for service or they get a will serve. They go on our list and they go in on the order that they've come to our process. And that's the priority in which we serve them. We realized at that point that we had 15 subdivision projects in our list that had existing will serve commitments that had developed piecemeal over the years. Some of them over 20 years in the past that they started and they still had remaining, you know, small amounts of capacity and there was no indication that they were moving forward. And so we took them out of the main part of our list. We've, we've since, before that, we had already changed our regulations to say that will serve commitments would expire in five years, but we're hoping to never have to test that. So we've, but we moved them to a different part of our commitments list called expired will serves. And that made that limited capacity that we had available for new development projects. At the time, there was a lot of discussion about the No Place Like Home project. And that was one of the projects that we were required by law to allocate capacity to first if we could, because it's an affordable housing project. At this point, we've received enough other applications for service for various projects that are in development in Sutter Creek and in Plymouth that the project applications that we're, that we have in hand exceed the reliable capacity that we have available and are encroaching on, you know, into the, the maximum capacity again. We didn't, we, we knew this would happen. It's not a surprise. So we've been working on projects to further expand the treatment plant. We have three projects that we're undertaking right now. One is aimed at improving the, the actual flow processes within the plant, the electronics and the, the valves and piping that operate within the plant to make it more efficient. A second project would add a new concrete tank on our site to provide additional finished water storage. The existing Clearwell that we have right now is somewhere 60 plus years old. We don't know exactly how old. We inherited it from PG&E. It has some serious problems with the cover on it that we really don't want to invest in fixing. We would rather replace it and it leaks. The near term plan is to build a new tank to add additional treated water storage to that so that then we have two treated water storage components, which helps our reliability. And then down the road, when we have more money, we hope, we'll be able to build a second concrete tank and we'll abandon the existing Clearwell. But right now we're trying to build that one new tank, a new three million gallon tank. And to expand the capacity of the plant, we have to increase our ability to handle the filter backwash that we produce. So we have a filtration system and every day we have to run water backwards through the filters to clean them out. And then that water goes to a disposal process. And we need to improve that and make it larger if we're going to expand the plant. These three projects are at about 90% design. The environmental work has been complete. The projects are estimated to cost over $32 million. Those projects are designed to bring the plant to its design capacity of 6 million gallons a day. Our planning estimates for growth in the area, we didn't consult Mr. Roney about our growth projections, but we did consult all the planners that are working in the county to develop refined growth estimates. And we think that by the year 2040, we will, we will need about five and a half million gallons a day. And we're aiming to expand the plant to six. So we think that gives us quite a good lifetime to plan additional needs as they occur. We think these three projects we're working on will be completed in two to two and a half years. And we are working with developers who are, you know, applying for service to try to make sure that their schedule for entitlement and construction matches our schedule so that we don't end up having to tell them no when they're ready for service. The Tanner Treatment Plant is one of two treatment plants in the, what we call the Amador Water System. The other one is the Ione Treatment Plant that serves Ione and surrounding areas, the prison, the Cal Fire Academy and all the way out to Eagles Nest. That plant has been in an even worse situation as far as capacity, which resulted in us declaring a water supply emergency and severe limitations on new connections two years ago. We have projects in the works on the same schedule to expand that plant. And we're working with the developers down there. They have eight or 900 homes in the planning process right now. We don't believe that they're going to move as fast as they would like to. Developers are always very optimistic, but we are working with them closely to try to join our schedules. And so we're pursuing those projects in Ione at the same time as the Tanner projects. Those two efforts and then a third effort where we're replacing one of our treatment tanks in our up country system up above Pine Grove. Those projects all together are the subject of debt issuance that we've been working on to the tune of about $70 million. We did a bond issuance in October for part of that. And we are about halfway through the process with federal EPA WIFIA program, which is the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, which created in 2014. It's a low interest federal loan program and we're anticipating closing a loan with them in November. We'll be issuing construction project, construction contracts for all these projects around the time of New Year's. And then we expect to be done in a couple of years. So I want to go back and remind you that when we did our significant rate increases that everybody probably remembers, starting in 2021, and we just did the last of those this July, was the fifth year of that five year program. We said that we needed to do that because of our capital improvements program. That was the main driver. There were other issues with staffing, staffing levels and so forth. But it was mainly driven by the capital improvements program. And we said that we needed to front load the increases so that we could become more credit worthy and that we anticipated issuing debt in 2024. Since then, we've completed 11 of the projects that were on our capital improvements list in 2021. The projects that I just described for these other projects represent seven additional projects off of that list. All of our construction cost estimates have doubled since 2021 because that's the way construction inflation has worked. And so we've needed to plan to acquire a lot more money than we thought. In 2021, we were envisioning a $15 million bond issuance and now we're looking at $70 million in debt. And, but we're working through that. The bottom line is that I want you to know that we, we have increased the rates, but we have as a byproduct of that increased the financial health of the agency. We improved our credit rating about three notches and we're now able to finance these important projects, which is what we said we were going to do with the money. At the same time, because now we've implemented the last rate increase from the previous study and because we are going to be back in the debt market this spring, we are working on our next rate study. We've had two rate workshops with our board. We'll be discussing the financial plan that underpins the rate study again this Thursday with our board to refine some of the scenarios that they're trying to choose between. We know we'll have at least two more public board meetings during the process before the board directs us to publish notice for some proposed rates. And between those board meetings, we will have a, an evening workshop that'll be a public workshop as well. So I wanted you and your constituents who are paying attention to this meeting to know that these are opportunities for people to engage on our rate study. When we did the 2021 rate adjustments, the board told the public that the, the plan, our long range financial plan foresaw future rate increases after this five year term to be more like inflation, not these major changes that we did last time. We have been presenting various scenarios to the board now and we're looking at probably rate increases in the four to 5% range in the next few years. So not the 30% that we did in 2021. Those are intended to be slightly above inflation and they are specifically designed to meet the debt service coverage ratios that we need to meet for the borrowing that we're doing now. We do plan in terms of schedule to publish notice of the proposed rates about the end of September. We plan to have the rate hearing in December and then those rates would take effect the following July. But we want to have the rate study done in December before we go to the debt market again in the spring because the rating agencies like to see that we've approved new rates. So that's my update tonight and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'd be happy to come back anytime in the future if you want to hear what's going on at the Water Agency.
Thanks for taking the time to update us. Counsel, did you have any questions?
I do, yeah. Thank you, Larry, for being here. Is the transmission line to Plymouth at capacity? Do you know the answer, if it is or not?
The answer is no, but don't ask many more details. I don't know any of the numbers. It's not at capacity. No, we have, we have some plans that have been made ever since it was built for what trigger points we would have to add boosting to it to push more water through it. But we're a ways from needing to actually increase the capacity of the pipeline or double the pipeline. In addition, the agreement to build the pipeline included the city of Plymouth building storage on their end of it, which they have not done yet, and they've been seeking grant funds for that for some time. And, you know, once they do that, then it helps us with the capacity of the pipe. But it's not at capacity now.
And then I see in the news, talk about the new casino and their, their wells. Will the casino be on an AWA customer?
They haven't decided that completely yet. They came to us some time ago to explore some possibilities about connecting either off of the transmission pipeline or through the city system. And then they, then they decided that instead of working with us on that directly, they were going to work through the city, which made a lot of sense. We weren't a part of those discussions, but my understanding, like everybody else from reading the newspaper, is that those discussions kind of fell apart. And they did announce a while ago that they're going to go forward with their own wells and construct their own wastewater systems. Since then, they have come back and talked to us about the longer term because even if they can open the casino, work with the wells that they have now, the longer range plans for development of that whole property are larger than that and they would need additional treated water probably. But we haven't really gotten beyond anything preliminary with them at this point.
Thank you.
Larry, I recall, I think it was around the time of the last rate increase that the Water Agency was going to hire some grant writers and researchers. Did that happen and was it, did it benefit?
Well, we didn't, didn't hire people. We've been very reluctant to hire people. We've added a few people. During the rate study, we, we included in the, the board's action for the rates, the addition of four employees, but those were preventative maintenance people and one additional treatment plant worker. But we did contract with a firm, a team to work on evaluating grant opportunities, writing grant applications and doing grant management. We get a very comprehensive report from them every two months. They have our whole capital improvements plan. They look at all of the usual sources of grant funding for public water system projects. They match them to our grant, to our projects, the opportunities, and then they evaluate them for, you know, likely or not, you know, how much effort should be put into it. So far, the, the information has been really good, but the opportunities haven't been that great. We spent, a couple of years ago, we spent quite a bit of money developing extensive grant applications for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And it was a very low success rate. And that really depleted a lot of our resources for grant seeking at that time. And other opportunities haven't been as promising. An example is that the Forest Service, the Department of Agriculture has a program that's specifically for assisting rural, small communities with pipeline projects. And we qualify as a rural, small community and we have a number of pipeline replacement projects, but they have like a $100,000 cap per project and we have $2 million projects. So they just don't fit very well, but we've had good information from them. Those consultants have done more work for us on the grant management side where we've acquired a couple of grants and they do the administration for us. But we continue to get their reports and we're ever, ever optimistic.
And Larry did share that info with me. I did talk to them about working with the city.
And then I have one more. Can you refresh my mind or educate me? At what point in a development in the entitlements process, do you, do you count them on your rolls as? So I, I believe, I understand correctly, there are developments that you all are, are counting in your numbers that have not been approved by the, the cities or the counties yet?
We, on our list, we start with projects that we've heard rumors about. And we have them on a list, the potential future projects. Then we have projects that are active in the city or county, but they haven't come to talk to us yet. We try to keep track of those. More importantly though, once people come to us and pull developer packets, then we have them in process. The first step is usually for them to get a, what we call a determination of water availability, which is not a service commitment, but it's just an evaluation of water supply and infrastructure. But it gives them an early look at what the conditions would likely be on will serve. And then when they have gotten to a certain point in the land use planning process, and I don't recall exactly what the milestone is, but you know, they're, they're working with the city. They've, they've got a map. Then they can get a conditional will serve from us and these are tracked. It's a category on our list. Conditional will serves are a service commitment, but there are very specific conditions they have to meet, including usually building all the system extensions that are necessary for their subdivision. That's all developer cost. And those commitments are valid for two years or they start over. But if they do all that and, and then they have, they've built everything. If it's dedicated to us, we've accepted it, the fees are paid, then, then we issue a will serve. And then when people apply for service, we go out and set meters. Sometimes we've even set the meters before that if they've paid the fees. But that's kind of the process. And our commitments list for the Tanner Plant looks like this. It's got all the categories, will serves, conditional will serves, determination of water availability. So just when I was telling you about the numbers before, when I look at this list and I see that our current reliable capacity is 4.56 million gallons a day and our existing connections and active meters and will serve commitments are 4.37 million gallons a day. So before you even get to conditional will serves and all the others, just the people that are there or have already got a will serve commitment are pushing our reliable capacity.
Thank you.
I have one question. I attended the, the last rate study public hearing that was held up at the county building. Will the Water Agency put forward the information regarding the financial need and kind of outlay, kind of like the overall? and kind of outlay, kind of like the overall plan, like what was done the first time? So the public has awareness of what you're describing as the needs to justify the rate increases over the next five years?
Absolutely. I mean, that's part of the reason that I wanted to come tonight. I've been trying to go to the cities and announce that we're doing the rate study so that people can participate. We're going to have a dedicated spot on our website. We're kind of overhauling the website right now, but there's going to be, you know, a rate study information part on the front page of our website. Of course, all the meetings that we're talking about are public Brown Act meetings. We are going to do a special newsletter that is mailed to all of our customers, or copy mailed to all of our customers, just about the rate study. And when we do the notice for the Prop 218 hearing, that includes a synopsis of what the proposed rates are, what the rates, what the rate impact is, what the bill impact will be to typical customers. And there is a short explanation there of what the justification is, what the needs are. I actually got some favorable comments last time about the write-up in the Prop 218 notice. What'll be different this time is that we're going to be publishing that at least 60 days before the hearing instead of 45 days. And we did get some comments on the protest forms that we received about how the information was presented, which I have on my desk right now, because we're reviewing that to see if we can do a better job of presenting that information this time around.
Thank you.
Did anyone in the public have any questions for Larry? Thanks for visiting us.
Invite me back anytime.
Thank you.
Okay, next we've got Brad.
Hello, Bradley Booker, Amador Trail Stewardship. Two items to discuss. The first, the B-PAC project between here and Amador City. We, I think you guys have one resolution already on the books. There was a second that was coming into term, and there were some issues there. The committee has revised the plan to remove basically all stenciling, because there were some paving concerns, just do bike route signs. But we're really looking to have a cohesiveness between the two cities and the county for this project. So we'd like to include you along in this and try to revise the plan as much as possible so that your participation can be part of it. I understand there was a force account issue where city, you know, Public Works had to do some management. The, basically that project management portion, we would love to volunteer our time to help you guys coordinate between the county, Amador City, ACTC, and Amador Trail Stewardship. Really to, like I said, we want to win for the community. We want to show people that we care about multimodal safety in our communities. And if that's the case with Sutter Creek, we'll try to remove every barrier possible. So if we want to move to page six of the presentation, that's the first section that considers Sutter Creek. I've redlined basically what we've taken out and the suggestions for that. If you guys have had a moment to review, any questions about these slides, let me know.
Brad, can you describe the Amador Trail Stewardship and its relationship to this project?
Yes, for this agenda item, Amador Trail Stewardship sits on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, helps planning and moving forward initiatives for multimodal safety improvements throughout the region. But we are a nonprofit that is dedicated to recreational enhancements, improvements throughout the county and the region as a whole. And the biggest ticket item that's in Sutter Creek is an assessment for a crosswalk right there at, I think it's Amador Road.
Crossing Hanford.
Yeah, crossing Hanford. So we can move on to the financial portion of that and the next agenda item, because it's related, but let's move through the actual route if you guys have any questions, comments, or concerns.
I think one important thing is to know that any signage will take place on already existing either stop sign poles or places. So there's actually no digging in Sutter Creek. There's minimal invasive, the only big project like Brad described would be coming up with a crosswalk that would have joined Spanish Street, going across Hanford, and being able to join up with Amador Road.
Any questions on the route?
I just have a quick question on the, so we're thinking of adding the bike signs to stop signs? Because they, or is it different kinds of signs?
Existing signposts, not, I don't think we put on stop.
Or a stop sign, or a speed sign, or a one-way sign, something like that.
Makes sense.
So the only real new, something new to be added on would be the actual crosswalk. Again, I encourage that we consider, seriously commit to this and our circulation element from 2021, and I don't think it's changed since. You know, one of the calls has been for multimodal access, both pedestrian and bicycle. And in the last four years, I don't think we've done much. And having this relationship with the trail stewardship, as I understand it, would actually be the overseeing manager, project manager, is that?
Yeah, if there are no questions about the, or if there are any serious questions about the route, we can move to the next agenda item.
So Brad, are you going to talk about the county segment at all?
Yeah, that's the next, so the second part is, Amador Trail Stewardship has an initiative called Pathways to Prosperity, and it's a region-wide.
Before we move on, I just want to confirm. So it goes from here on Main Street for Abloc and then on to Spanish. So it completely bypasses the whole Gopher Flat mess and then crosses Amelia. So that's the, there's a sign there, sign halfway down Main Street to, okay.
So Amador Trail Stewardship has an initiative that was funded by the CR Business Council, where we have some funding to do planning throughout Amador, Alpine, Calaveras, and Tooluma Counties. Under this initiative, we're asking for city governments to submit plans, projects, any ideas that you have, ways you're trying to connect your homes to your towns, your business to your neighbor, your schools to your kids, whatever you're trying to do. We have a way to submit a project, and we will evaluate the region and try to make the most impact with the funding we have available. So we want to make that offer to Sutter Creek. We've been working with you guys for years on this potential improvement, and that is the first official offer is the management for this project. We will work with your city and cover the management costs to coordinate between putting up the Sutter Creek portion of the route, including engineering for the crosswalk. We'll bring out someone to take an analysis and find out what it'll take. But we only want to engage in projects that are important to your city, and you are motivated to complete. And the planning has to be completed by September 26. And if those parameters can't be met, we just find some other ones that can.
So the reason I asked about the county is, again, ACTC has said they have money. The biggest segment is in the county, and I think it'd be great to do the advisory bike lanes. But I think we really, we can, we have a stripper, we could do the crosswalk ourselves. But doing a couple-mile-long line on the side of the road, we would probably need to hire a firm to do that. And so in my mind, that's been the biggest holdup, is getting that county segment.
Yeah, well, what we're looking for is a resolution from Sutter Creek that matches one from Amador City, saying we're working together for this initiative. We have planned and engineered the route, and they will actually, ACTC then can step in with, they have funding available for the project. What they need is the teams to be all together, so.
But the county hasn't wanted to do it, so we would have to, probably Sutter Creek would have to manage the county section. And again, I just wanted to make sure that the money is there from ACTC.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the county section is on the county. We walked through with Public Works with the improvements and the plans, and they are, they're good with making those throughout that county section. So I'm not exactly sure. If they choose to go down to the advisory shoulder, then, you know, maybe there's some more painting, but I don't know that the county is going to go for that at all. It's probably just going to be signage and share the road. And like I said, what we're doing is we're making routes that we can encourage our people to use.
That's the first time I've heard, I think shareos would probably be a good way to go. Talked to John Gedman last week, and he's always been talking about the county. I forget, not an easement, but basically giving Sutter Creek permission to paint the county road, which always seemed like a strange way to do it to me.
It hasn't come up in our meetings in years, so I'm not really sure where that came from.
Okay.
So on our end, it's to agree to the signage and the crosswalk, really, and that this is what we want. What's the process for us to, not to paint a crosswalk, but to approve a crosswalk? We just do that?
I think we can, yeah. I mean, we've painted, we added, I think we added new crosswalks up near the schools. We just did it. So, yeah, I don't see this as an issue at all. Again, to me, it was this county section that was always the challenge.
Which I think the B-PAC will address the county under that part. If we can get Sutter Creek to say, yes, we like this part within city limits of Sutter Creek, then it matches what we're doing on Amador City, and then we go to the county with the middle. So we do the negotiation as the committee for the project to be completed. But what we know is we need teams together, right? We need two cities that are ready to work together on a project, and the county is much more willing to look at these improvements. So we're confident that if we can get resolutions from both cities that match, that we can move forward with the program.
Anyone have questions for Brad on the council? Public?
Yeah, I have a question. So we're talking about striping from Sutter Creek to Amador City?
No.
Well, just kind of an update. So it sounds like either no striping and some share the road signs, like slow down their bikes here.
If you looked in, the presentation has, each segment is broken down into, and it shows the possibilities. So through Amador City, it'll show what it does. And then through the county, it's a series of signs or beacons or potentially striping on a small section of the road going up the hill outside of Sutter Creek, city limits before it gets narrow at the top. But the road isn't big enough to handle adjustments, right? And it's not in good quality, like the paving isn't good enough to really handle either. So yes, those things are, we will take what can be done, but what we're going to do is everything that also can be done, right? Signage, beacons, share the road, and then again, yeah, we're really just making all the improvements that are feasible in our area.
Any questions from the public? Okay, this is just a presentation, so, you know, there's, we're unable to give direction or anything. I would assume a resolution would be the next thing to come back?
I mean, if you guys all kind of nod your heads, I would basically say, why don't I get Brad to meet with Dan, and we can order signs and things? I don't think, I mean, I'll check with Derek. I don't think this is big enough to have to come back to you guys necessarily.
Unless Brad needs a resolution to, a piece of paper to show the county that Sutter Creek and Amador City are on the same page?
I'll ask our team and see. I know we have one in place already with some support.
We did this.
Yeah, I feel like you guys have already voted.
We may be able to move forward with what's on the books already. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. Okay, item six is the approval of minutes from June 30. Anyone have any comments or otherwise, or your motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from June 6?
Second. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda. I had one question slash comment, Mason, you're here. And, you know, I'm willing to maybe take it later, because I think it's a much longer conversation.
You want to pull then one of the agenda items or?
Well, I don't know yet. Let me, let me ask this. Or I guess I'd like to make a suggestion. I had one large question, yes, I'm sorry. Let's pull the insurance agenda item. Is there a motion to approve the DRC appointments?
So move?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Second one, I'll shoot, and we could see if we can move on with this. As you know, I have a lot of questions about our insurance coverage. I keep coming up with them, and almost every month, something on our agenda triggers that in my mind. You know, what are the implications for our insurance? I have questions regarding the police force, I've had questions regarding the pool. I think maybe the best thing to do is if we have some kind of item in the future where you or somebody lets us know how this works. And what, you know, I assume at some point in this process, we, did I go off?
No, I still hear you.
Okay. We fill out some sort of menu, you know, about our city, and that's how our fees are determined. I just still want to know more. And then in the meantime, on page 33 of the agenda, there is a clause in here about self, the purpose of this agreement is to provide joint powers, come to each blah blah blah, to pool self-insured claims and losses to purchase or participate in excess. And the self-insured part is part of what I'm really freaked out about, you know, with all of our things. I want to know if we are self-insured for some things in the city? So I need to know more. I don't think that this document needs to be held up for that, but I'm only one person. So if you guys don't have an interest in that, maybe I could just meet with Mason.
Actually, I had highlighted that, I think also for clarification. And purchasing, I guess I needed to better understand what excess pooling or excess insurance coverage refers to. And then there was one other clause that I had that I wasn't clear about.
Were these redlined clauses, or? I mean, part of these existing.
The self-insured one is redlined.
Yeah. So, I mean, let Mason jump in, but we are in a risk pool with all these other cities, so we're all insuring each other. And I think it's very well managed. There's, most cities are in pools, and there's different ones. I think we're in a good one. I think the idea of maybe doing a session on it would be good if you guys are interested.
I've had.
Anyone had anything else?
Yeah, I've had, her name's Jeanette Workman, she's like the, I don't know, Erin, what was her title? It's like executive.
I'm sorry, Erin, you're doing this now too, so I didn't mean to exclude you, but.
No, it's fine, because Mason still knows more than I do, but I'm slowly picking it up. She's like the head of.
It's the company hired to run the JPA, basically.
Yeah.
That, maybe that's a nice segue, since you're starting to do it. Maybe that's something that we could be involved in getting some information to.
She has mentioned to me, I was just there at the end of June when they were going over their, on their board. She was saying that she's been meaning to come by and kind of like talk to Erin and I just about kind of what they do. Because she had done that with previous city administration, but she just hadn't with us. And I know she's planning on retiring soon, and she's just a wealth of knowledge. She's been there forever. And so maybe it would be good to have her come, if she's willing to do a public meeting and just kind of go over what our plan does. Because we have, we're enrolled in some stuff, some things we don't have an option to be not enrolled in. It's required, but we are, there's optional and non-optional coverages as well that we are in and not in. And maybe it'd be good for her to come by and just kind of like lay it all out for us and say, this is what you are in.
So there may be some things we are self-insured for.
Well, we pay for, no, we pay for pooled coverage for certain things. So like cities would combine, would, you know, if they decide to opt into this certain coverage, they all pool it, and then they get lower rates, because it's so many people.
So this is a, maybe the thing that's confusing you is this is not an insurance company. It's a risk management association. We are all self-insuring each other, all these cities that are part of the JPA. And we do get a form every year. We do go over it really carefully. We kind of try to minimize what we're insuring. If we have really old cars, they have like a low-cost car insurance separate from the high-cost car insurance. So it gets very detailed, and we list all of our assets as a city.
I'm sure you guys are doing a great job.
I think the education part of it, I think she's perfectly willing to at least, you know. she's offered to come talk to Erin and I, but maybe if I make it more, if she's willing to do like a public meeting where we can all be in a conversation about it and talk about, I mean, she can still do a one-on-one with me and Erin for the more nitty gritty stuff, but it's not a bad idea to see if she'd be willing to educate everybody.
What other S do you guys think?
Okay with me. If she was willing to do that.
Yeah.
I do have some trainings lined up for myself already on like workers comp and some of the more fine details of it because it covers a lot, you know, vehicles, workers comp to our buildings.
Well, and, and I, I just have to assume because for all of us, when we go home and, you know, people speaking to us in the audience, insurance is such an issue right now between fire and homeowners and everything else that it has to be an issue for the city. And I just feel like I need to know more about it.
They do have some great programs like, ever since I've started, we make sure we do some sidewalk shaving or some sidewalk projects because they reimburse up to a thousand dollars for us, um, to mitigate risk for trip and hat, trip and falls. So they do stuff like that too, where we, when we, you know, get the green light, that it's a program that we can participate in, we try and do that to just to leverage everything they offer for us.
One of the biggest things is basically liability protection from lawsuits.
Yeah. So they, you know, they do a lot of mitigation stuff to try and just stop it from happening altogether. It's one of the big pushes too lately.
I don't have a problem going ahead and moving on with a motion to, or, you know, go ahead and pass this, but.
I think we should.
Okay.
I, I don't think we have a choice, do we? Other than having insured no risk or not.
I, I, I just meant, I don't think there's a, a reason to wait to, to move on that, to get that information, but I, I would like to at some point in the future do that if it's possible. So that said, I'd hear a motion to pass.
But I don't, I don't think we should interrupt your, your one-on-one sessions, Erin.
No, 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 no.
Oh no, I'm going to keep doing those.
Yeah, no, this would be on top of, you know, one-on-ones that.
Or maybe if it's not a person, maybe they have some PowerPoint thing that you could lead us through that, um, other cities have received.
Sure.
Yeah, I know what I was going to say. If she doesn't want to come, I'm sure they have information.
Sure, I'm not the only curious one. Okay, thanks, Mason.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve item B on the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, uh, nine.
Before you move on, I did want to mention on the DRC appointment, we have the new member here with us. Uh, this is Sharla.
Sorry, Sharla. Did you want to introduce yourself or? I apologize. I kept giving you that I during public comment. I wasn't sure what you were here for. So.
That's what I mean.
Now I know.
I'm Sharla Lopez and I've been in Amador County over 30 years and three years ago I moved to Sutter Creek. And I adore Sutter Creek and I adore history and I am thrilled to be on this board. So thank you.
Great. Nice to meet you. Okay, that takes us to nine A. The weed abatement operation plan.
Can we go back to the city manager report?
Oh, sure.
Just, just a couple of updates I want to give you guys. First, uh, there was a fire in the basement of, of city hall last Wednesday. About 1:00 AM. It is under an active investigation. We think it's a suspicious fire. But I'll share more when I can, but it's basically, you know, being actively investigated right now.
Is that sprinkler?
What's that?
Is there sprinklers there? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and the alarm went off and, and thanks to, uh, Dominic and, and our police, was noticed very quickly and put out very quickly. So.
How much damage is there?
Minimal damage. It actually, um, damaged the, uh, AT&T equipment for the cell phone tower. But didn't do anything to the building.
Thank goodness.
Um, and then, you know, we've continued to roll out new financial services. So the sewer billing is, is rolling out. There's a public facing web portal where people can pay their bill online. They can sign up for notifications to be text their email when their bill goes out, or if their payment is late. They can pay by cellphone, by voice. Um, and again, Mason's been working hard on getting this out and, um, we're trying to get the communications out. A lot of people that were in auto pay weren't necessarily paying attention to city communications through other channels.
Guilty as charged.
Yeah, the old account stopped working. We're not charging late fees until we get people switched over this last month. But if you guys can help get the word out, it's up and running and we see a lot of people signing up, I think every day. And then we are continuing to work on improving the reporting. There was some initial stuff this month. I think we can get it looking better. The finance department, everybody in the city, we're actually using the new system now for accounts payable. And, uh, we're working on the next step, which is really moving payroll and the timesheets over, um, which I think should be done at the end of this month. Is that the goal? No, September? Oh, okay. That's what I meant into August. Yeah. Also, we, we skipped a meeting, so we haven't met since June 30th, but I think the poll party this year was a big success. I think a lot of people had fun. Also, we are making some good progress on code enforcement. So we'll give you guys an update probably in the next meeting on that item. Senator Maria Gill's staff person was here last week for public meetings. I spent with some time where they were talking about, um, looking for funding for our wastewater plant. The INI projects are underway. I think we can do a better job of getting notifications out to the public. So we're going to be working on improving that as we go street to street, just to give people a heads up that it's, that's coming. And then Henderson's all ready to begin construction here at the, at the beginning of August. I think I shared with you, or maybe it was the RSA board, you know, we had spent money on a grant application. Actually complained quite a bit because it turned out it wasn't really a valid application for us. And so they are, they are crediting us, uh, back the money for that grant. So.
Good. Thank you.
We also kind of, we revised the scope and signed the entrepreneur grant we got. So we have, um, $65,000 that we're going to use for uh, entrepreneurship, planning and hosting some events, um, in the grammar school. And then, um, Erin's been working on our annual, uh, Sutter Creek display for the county fair. So we will be there again this year.
Not me personally, I'm not designing the air window.
Managing the process.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then that's kind of our next event. The county fair is coming up in July. The ragtime festival is the week after that. And then at the end of the month's fireman's ball. In terms of your agendas, just a reminder, we're not meeting the first Monday in August, but we will meet on August 18th. There is a small possibility, depending on what happens with some of our, um, union negotiations, we may call a short special meeting, but if we don't need to, we won't. And, um, some of those items, again, are the code enforcement update. Wanted to give an update on.
Will that be open or closed session?
Uh, that'll be probably be closed session. Striping plan update that might, that might come in September. And again, we're looking at various updates to some ordinances. I don't remember if I talked to you guys about all of these. The trench ordinance is, um, we're seeing a lot of cities have ordinances that once the city is repaved, um, somebody can't come by and dig it up again, just to put in, uh, a phone line or something. So, um, we're, we're looking at some of those to protect the streets once we get them paved. Or if they do dig it up, they have to repave a section of it, not just patch a, a small section.
Question, Tom, would a short-term rental update be an update just on the numbers that we have, or will it actually be an opportunity to, discuss an actual ordinance for?
Yeah, I, I think the last time we came, you guys asked us to maybe look at some other cities. So I think we'd probably come maybe with some examples.
That'd be good, I think.
And you guys can decide. Again, I understand quite a bit of time was spent before without really doing an update. So you know, we've had, we do have had a few more, um, Airbnb applications, you know, so we do want to bring it back to you guys and see if it's something you want to address. And that's it.
Any questions for Tom? Public, any questions for Tom?
One, one quick question. I, Dan's not here, so I can't ask him. I see if we fixed the, uh, the sinkhole on Gopher Flat. And that on the, in the back of the, on the Dan's report, he attached a picture that shows the pipe to be in pretty good condition. Do you know what caused then the sinkhole or do you?
I haven't heard a reason, but yeah, we, we thought the pipe looked pretty good. So.
Yeah, okay. I'll ask Dan later. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the administrative agenda and the weed abatement operation plan.
Yes, so, um, I'll introduce this and then tonight's kind of a Will's night. He worked on all three items before you tonight. So you guys passed this weed abatement ordinance. We've been working on, uh, actually implementing it. And, uh, you know, as you see in the report, we've gone through a series of steps. The fire department has been out doing their inspections. They gave us the first group about 20, I think, that have had three inspections. And they're going to continue to give us more as they finish. And kind of the next step is how, how is the city going to enforce? How are we going to communicate? And, um, Will, you want to take it, take it from there?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm Will Watson. I'm the project manager for the city of Sutter Creek, for anyone who I haven't met yet. I've had the opportunity to, um, base, basically write up the standard operating procedure for the enforcement portion of the ordinance that was passed. Um, and what it does, it, it outlines, um, basically the identification, notification, inspection, citation and abatement. And then we have some cost recovery. Once the fire department or fire district, uh, does their three inspections, they provide a list of, um, violators, um, and then, within five days of, of receiving that notification from the fire department, the city will go out and conduct an inspection themselves more visible, uh, such as a visual for, uh, capturing information for our records. And just making sure there is in fact a violation. And, uh, at that point, um, a former courtesy letter is detailing the violation gets sent out with corrective actions included. And there's a, a 15-day compliance deadline, uh, associated with that courtesy letter. And then there, that's the first notice. We do have an optional second notice, depending if they are, um, communicating with us or not. At that point, the, so it's basically the discretion of the city to allow another 15 days. If that, um, if the owner does not comply, uh, the city may proceed with the abatement and send a, a final notice that, um, we've included like a contract with a weed abatement contractor that we've partnered with. Um, and they'll come out and do the cleanup. We've written, um, kind of a, a policy here where, a reserve, a police officer reservist, uh, would maybe accompany the weed abatement, um, contractor, just in case. Again, a, a lot of the violations, um, are open land and parcels. So it's not necessarily, you know, homes on these properties that are, are like the, the major nuisance. But it would be, it would be nice to have just in, just for safety purposes. There is, uh, they can, they can appeal the abatement. They'll basically have to submit that within 15 days. We'll have to hold a hearing, uh, within 10 to 20 days of that notice. And then a final decision can be made within 72 hours. And let's see. So let's see, we have, I think the, the, the main thing is that, um, once we've, once we've sent out those letters, there's, there's been no compliance. Then we move forward with sending out the contractor and we're going to have to recover that payment somehow. Um, so recovery notice will be mailed out. There's a net 30 payment term. If it's unpaid, a lien is filed with the Amador County Recorder and can be added as a special assessment on the tax bill. There can be civil fines, citations and a 10% admin fee added, uh, and applied to, um, that chapter. And we would, um, store, uh, and record all the reports, photos and notices on the planning file server under code enforcement. And we would probably have to, let's see, we would review the SOP annually on that process. So this is just, this is the enforcement side of the weed abatement ordinance, which we didn't have in the ordinance. And it's, it's an internal process on, on making sure that, um, all parcel owners are complying with that ordinance. Any questions?
I, I have some. One is, um, as a start with the city will engage a contractor. Is that someone local landscape company? Um, do we have someone specific in mind?
Yeah, it's, it's a company called The Weed Solutions. And they've partnered with, um, surrounding communities, City of Jackson. That kind of thing. So, um, they're insured, bonded, um, and reliable.
Okay, so they would actually come out on an on-call basis? Cause I noticed they said, you know, to save travel and mileage that, you know, visits would try to be grouped together.
Absolutely. And that's a conversation I had with The Weed Solutions already. So they would group them.
Okay. The other, the other thing is I kind of drew out the timeline, like one to five days. The city does an inspection after receiving a complaint. Then 15 days for the owner to comply with the city's decision. By the 15th day, then a second inspection, then there's another 15 days for a second compliance period.
So that's, we're only doing that second one. If they are talking to us and they're telling us they're going to do it. If, you know, if they're blowing us off, we're not necessarily going to do that second notice.
Okay. Because if you add, that's like 35 days from the initial, and then there's.
Did you include the appeal?
That's, that's my next. You're, you're just a step ahead. So there's another 15 days for the filing to appeal. And then within 10 or 20 days, the hearings. So that's another 35.
It's the same 15 days. They have to appeal within 15 days of us sending the letter.
So you have 15 days to appeal. And then the hearing is, so that 15 days was, is within the 10 to 20 days.
And those, those times were in the ordinance that we, we passed. And again, our goal here is not to abate a lot of people and incur a lot of costs. It's.
No, I'm just trying to look at the timeline.
Yeah.
Because you're, you're looking at two and a half months roughly.
It's longer than we'd like. I'm not sure it's two and a half months because some of those things happen at the same time.
70 days plus the three days.
Yeah.
So.
And again, we, I don't think everybody's going to appeal. Like, you know, the hope here is that people will take it seriously. You know, we're trying to lower fire risk. This first year is probably going to be the roughest year because it's going to be a change, right? But hopefully people get the message and
Oh, sure.
start to comply when they see these notices come. They, they've already gotten three notices from the fire district.
That's what, yeah, that all, this all starts after, how long do you guys notice before you give the list to the city? Or how many times rather?
So a couple of things. First, uh, the actual first inspection depends on the season. So some years we start in March, some years we start in May because we don't notice until the fuels have cured. If we, uh, if we notice too early, we'll go out and post properties, people clean their properties. And then we have to go back another month later to start the process again. So we wait till the fuel's cure. We then go through a process and depending on, like Tom said, if the people are working with us. Cause one of the big problems we have, there's very few people that are actually doing this work out there. I've had people say, hey, I'm trying to hire somebody. Nobody will come up, nobody will answer the phone, trying to get work done. So that's a problem. So we try to work with individuals. So some of these inspections might be three or four weeks. Some might be a month and a half, depending how, how people react with us. We had a gentleman off of Ridge Crest that wanted to donate the land to the city. That was actually a 12 month process to get to the point where he actually brought in big equipment and cleaned the whole hillside off. So we try to work with people. I try because a lot of times they, they don't have the ability to do it themselves. And they have a hard time getting somebody to come in and actually do the work.
The weed solution.
What's that? Yeah. So one of, one of the things we might want to do, I brought this up to Tom before, is sort of like a public shaming type thing where the people that are getting noticed get actually posted on the website, you know, these properties need to be cleaned. They've been noticed, names and stuff like that. So a little bit of public shaming, it might help the process go a little faster. If people see their names or their neighbors see your names on a, a website or something like that. So that's just an idea also.
Is this, um, kind of the, the 15 days, um, you know, as Jim described, you know, there are several families that only come up twice a month. You know, they own the property, but they're not up here maybe often enough to actually really take care of things. Is that a separate issue and all that, or just complicates?
It just complicates because basically we go out and we either post, if we post a piece of property, a vacant piece, we then mail them the notice. If there's somebody at the, like a house and they're there, we actually physically hand them the notice. So there's different processes how we notify. So a lot of these homes we might go out to that are, uh, people that aren't living here. So we'll go post it on a house and then we'll have to mail it to them and then make contact, if in contact with us. Some of these people never contact us. So we basically go through a process and they've never called us. They never respond back to the notices. And then basically we go through the process and we hand them off. So, uh, we have more and more properties that are not owner occupied. That is what we're finding out as we're doing these inspections through town. Uh, this year I think people are actually doing a better job.
I was going to ask if you've noticed a difference.
Yes, uh, we've actually had some of the problem ones in the past that didn't clean, that are actually starting to clean. And then we have some other ones that we're working with, trying to get them cleaned. So, uh, there are more, people are being more receptive. There is a lot right there off of Tucker Hill that we've always had problems cleaning. That little tiny lot there, uh, one house over from Tucker Hill that the people I think live in back east somewhere. And then we've always had, they basically would never respond. They would never clean it. Well, they actually cleaned it this year. So that was actually a step forward on that one there. So those are the things we need to look at, uh, going forward. A couple of little things just to put in perspective. Our biggest problem in California isn't wildfires. It's actually fire prevention. If we did the fire prevention, then we wouldn't have the wildfires. The wildfires, we have a half the wildfires today that we had 25 years ago. It just seems with social media and everything else, it's, they're very much blown up constantly. These fires that are happening in areas is because the fire prevention wasn't being done. The Palisades had thousands of insurance policies canceled a couple of months before the fire because insurance companies are telling the people weren't cleaning their properties and the open spaces were not being cleaned. And that's why they were canceling all their insurance policies. Those, but those are the things we have to do. Unfortunately, our biggest threat in Sutter Creek isn't the city of Sutter Creek. It's outside. Every single one of these fires, catastrophic fires, don't start in the cities.
The Al Gore Fire was by a camper.
They all, well, they all start somewhere outside, get ahead of steam and they hammer the cities. And our, our problem is in Amador County and most of state actually, if you have a vacant piece of property out in the county, nobody does anything to it. Cal Fire doesn't do anything, the county doesn't do anything. If you have a house there, Cal Fire will go look at the house. But if it's a vacant piece of property and it's covered with man's in it and brushing everything else, nothing happens to it out there. And I've been pushing for years to have the board of supervisors actually draft an ordinance that would actually deal with vacant properties. Cause that's our biggest threat to the city is the vacant properties outside of us. Basically getting, basically going and then ahead of steam into us. So that's something we probably need to work on. All the cities need to work on with the county. The biggest thing is the county doesn't want to impact these large property owners, you know, old families and everything else. But I always tell people, when you buy a property, you basically take the responsibility to take care of that prob, property. And just leaving it vacant, doing nothing with it, uh, it impacts other people in the process.
Thank you, Dominic. I had a couple of things I just want to clear. I, I think I understand it. I understand and appreciate that both the fire department and the city, uh, as we go through this, if people are responding, you know, if we're engaged, then we're going to keep working with them. It's when we're not hearing anything back. But if you look at our, so our SOP here, step four is you guys. And that's a process, you know, you're engaging with them for a while. So I think it needs to be understood that before they're handed over to the city, there's been significant amount of time.
Yes.
Yeah, but then, um, so the, the city goes off because we have to, you know, photograph it and everything for our own enforcement records. I get that. Step four, we do the initial notification. And just to clarify, and I think this shortens, um, what Julia has written down for our timeline. Step eight, the timer starts right after step four. Is that right, Will? It's not an additional
Right.
15, okay. So step eight starts after step, step four.
That's what Tom was saying.
Yeah. What I'm not seeing here, and I believe we discussed when we passed the ordinance, is when do we issue a citation? Cause I do think monetizing it in some point, at some point before we go through and, and have to, what's, what's the term that we're doing where we abate it? Yeah. So, so it mentions here issuance of a citation is a possibility. You know, where's that in the timeline? And I think we should do it because I think we'd be less likely to have as many properties abated.
Do you have anything on this citation? Because.
Well, again, we talked to lots to Jackson. They had their person came over, I think from Elk Grove, and she brought a lot of good processes that they've been using. We can issue the citation with the, the, the final notice letter. A lot of people don't pay the citation. So we can definitely try it, I think.
I think it would make sense to issue the citation.
I mean, because we use a citation, they don't do anything.
Step four.
And then we abate, now they owe the abatement plus the citation. So it's kind of a question of do we just, if, if we're getting nothing, if it's absentee homeowner or landowner, they're not responding, do we just abate it? Send them a bill this year and then, you know, they'll get the message.
I, I think that there's a chance that the citation would catch more attention than the first notices. And they would do something before it's abated. I mean, that would be the, the point of it.
Right.
Otherwise it's just more paperwork. But, um, I, I think that you pay more attention to your mail when it's a bill, right?
Well, we're going to make them definitely not, it's going to say, you know, like notice a violation. And it's going to, even that first letter from us, because again, they've already gotten three, three letters from the fire district, so.
But in step four, if, like what Claire, you kind of hinted at, if it says property owners required the contents of the initial notification, the description of the requirement, deadline for compliance. And I, that might be a place, you know, failure to comply with this will result in a X number dollar fine. Please take care of this ASAP. So I think by adding that, realizing that if I don't take care of this, this is coming out of my pocket, that, that might encourage action earlier rather than having to go through step five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Yeah, it's a fair point. And we can definitely afford a lot more citations than cleanups.
No, but I'm just saying by e- even including the monetary fine amount, if this isn't taken care of, I think would get a lot of people's attention.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, one thing that's not written into the ordinance is the citation amount.
It is, I mean, it refers to another section. I think that defaults like a hundred dollars.
Oh, okay. All right, I didn't see that.
So one thing again, for the wow factor, I think the, the letter that comes from the city should be on a Sutter Creek PD letterhead. So it shouldn't just come from the city code enforcement or the city manager or whatever. It should be coming from the city PD. Cause I think that'll have more, if somebody gets a letter from the police department saying, you need to get this done, that might have a little bit more impact than getting a letter from the city of Sutter Creek.
Well, and I think also it would get more impact if it has a bill in it for a hundred dollar citation. And, you know, it'll cost you this much more if you ignore this.
What you might be able to do is say, you know, this bill is going to be due in 15 days if you don't do your work.
Right.
Right. I mean, there's something like that. I don't know if the ordinance will allow that.
Well, I, I, we included citation in the ordinance.
To avoid this bill being enforced, you have 15 days to, I mean, that's going to be stated in the, the courtesy letter. I'm sure.
We're, we're still finalizing the courtesy letter and Tom wanted to add or incentivize basically, some type of verbiage that hits those points.
Avoid penalties.
Right.
My, my other question, maybe you better stay up there, Dominic. Some of this process, this process is triggered for some properties, not by you guys, but by community complaints. So if you guys are tagging them and they're engaging or not engaging, you know, that's, that's maybe a week's long process if, if they're talking back. How does the clock start for a community complaint? If somebody calls in about their neighbor, a person complains about their neighbor? And do they jump to step three and four here in this?
So obviously if somebody complains, we have to go inspect it first.
Well, but if they're complaining, if this is bypassing you guys, if a neighbor.
This is not just for fire, right?
Right.
This ordinance, somebody could complain that there's a bunch of trash, you know, somebody's hoarded in their yard and
Sure.
and yeah, so they would.
Would not involve the fire district.
Right, exactly. So that first step, I mean, basically, I think it says complaints can come in through community complaints, city inspection or the fire department. So we would go to step three. We would do the inspection and take photos and determine if we agree with the complaint about whatever the issue is. And then it would just feed into this process.
I guess my concern then would be so if, i- if it comes from a complaint, we jump to step three and then they, we issue a letter and then they've got their 15 days and then another 15 days. Whereas, eh, eh, you know, maybe that's bad luck. You got a, a nosy, you know, one person's complaining about you. You live by a pretty fastidious person, you know, whatever the case may be. Or maybe it's a huge violation.
If it's a weed abatement issue and we know the fire department's covering it, I think we'll probably tell the person that it's part of that process. I'm just saying if
I, I just
Yeah.
Want to avoid, um, somebody being on a very tight clock with rigid 15 day points that they can do something based off a, a neighbor's complaint versus somebody having, you know, a, a month or two to engage with.
Again, this is, um, we're just sharing with you kind of our process. We, our goal is, we're not going to be, you know, 15 days on the clock. But we want to have this, this process defined. If people are, are working with us, you know, that's what we want. So just like code enforcement in general.
You've got a carrot and a stick.
Yeah.
The carrot is preferred.
So example is we've had people call up and say, hey, I want to complain about that neighbor. But we've already, they're already started the process on them. And then there's other, the other thing, it takes us approximately three to four weeks to do the whole city on the initial inspection. Cause we look at every parcel in the city. And every time we do something, we actually, there's paperwork. There's like four different things have to be filled out. Things have to be noted and corrected. So, uh, when you go out to post it, you have to send them, you have to send a letter out and everything else. So it's time consuming to do them. So if you go out and they're.
And it's virtually your volunteers also.
Well, we, we actually have, this year we actually had a gentleman who was on light duty. So he basically, that was his function. So he'd go out there and spend that. And it took them roughly, I think it was just over three weeks to hit all, because we hit, leave a look at every property. And then, so example, another example would be you say, we usually start systematically. So we start usually on this end of town and we work to that end of town. So we end up at Sutter Hills, our last inspections and stuff. So there's sometimes somebody will say, hey, my, my neighbor off of Oremadre, or excuse me, somebody off of like Mesa de Oro has an issue. We don't jump to that one. We basically know, we basically note it and we head towards that direction. So that way we don't skip in around the city. We try to go in a systematic way across the city.
Any other questions from the council? Public?
So I'm also a realtor in Amador County. And so this weed abatement and this, this whole thing, and though it is, it's amazing and we have to get it done. I don't know if everybody realizes how much this is costing people. It's a highly unregulated industry. We got people charging huge amounts of money. I have one client up country and it's just this small little lot. And it's going to cost him a thousand, $300 to get this property. And it was just done. He just paid 12,000 to get all the wood out of there. And so possibly, um, the chief mentioned that they can't find anybody to do it. Can we get some sort of list of people who, again, it's very unregulated. So I don't know how you guys found somebody with a license because I haven't found anybody with a license yet. So can we get a list, kind of like, um, Jackson does with their, um, uh, their water people? You know, when they go and check the valves and stuff? Maybe a list that you could hand out to them and say, here, and try to help them to be able to get it done, what needs to get done.
Good idea.
You, you probably have a few, a, a list currently, don't you? Have, that you, that possible ref, that you can refer people to?
So we, we haven't actually created an official list. We will tell people, here's some people you can contact.
Right.
We try to get a lot of these high school kids to go buy a weed eater and make some money during the summer. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of them that do that. But, uh, she's exactly right. That's one of the things is we're sort of work with people because all of a sudden somebody has, a, somebody usually does the cleaning on the property, all of a sudden they break a leg or something, right? Can't do it. And then somebody says, well, weed eat your lot, takes three hours, but I'm going to charge you $2,000 to do it. And so we need to allow those people the opportunity to try to find a cheaper alternate to that. Another thing that the realtors having to deal with is they put a, they put a rule in the place. And when you sell a house, you have to have a defensible space inspection, which is a total crock. So what happens, it's, it's like a pest inspection. They come out and they say, hey, your deck needs to be replaced. Your windows need to be caulked, that tree needs to be cut down. And all of a sudden you got $30,000 or $40,000 worth of improvements you have to do to your property. A lot of these homes selling up country, especially are selling their homes not because they want to, they have to. Cause they're being told that they have to do $30,000, $40,000 worth of work. They're on a fixed income, they can't afford it. So they end up having to sell their house. When the new buyer comes in, they basically say, well, I want that you to do the work. If not, I want you knocking off the price of the house. The way the state law is written is you're supposed to, either the current owner or the future owner is supposed to do it within one year of the cleaning. Well, guess what? The enforcer of that ordinance, I don't know if you know this or not, the enforcer of that state law is Cal Fire. Cal Fire will not enforce it. So if you go to somebody's house and tell them they have to do $30,000 of work, the new owner gets 30,000 off the house and they don't have to do work because nobody checks it. It's a total crock. You know, and it's another one of those things, somebody down in Cal, Sacramento created this stupid rule that impacts people up in Amador County. Yes. Yep. Yeah, so it's, we've, we've created a big mess. And there's a lot of people praying, not praying, praying on people with these costs and coming out and doing things. I had a gentleman come up the other day, they're trying to do some spray where they come around your house and they spray this fire retardant around your house. And it's, uh, it's $500 for every thousand square feet. So if you do 10,000 square feet for an house, you're talking $5,000, right? And I told the guy, why don't you just clean your property? You know, you know, but that's what's happening. We have these people selling stuff out there. These, there are people are making, selling you events for your house that are 30, 40, 50, a hundred dollars for a vent when you can go to Lowe's and get them for $4.99. There's all. There's all these people have taken advantage of the situation and are basically, basically stealing money from all these individuals out there.
That's very unfortunate, but I think in your guys' process and the city's process, you know, the point of people are engaging is to, to work with them. Cause you know, we all want the same thing in the end. I think, um, historically, and Dominic can correct me if I'm wrong. What we've mostly had problems with in town is, um, absent property owners that, you know, are never here and we never hear back from. And, and that's where we may have to go to that point where we do it for them.
Yes.
Thanks, Dominic. Anybody else? Will, do you have the direction you need? Or discussion that you need or whatever you need?
I think I have everything I need.
Okay.
Cause I think the only thing we, we ask is for a monetary, like bill, warning, you know, noose type of thing.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We'll, we'll add that in.
Okay, that takes us to B, more fire, um, fire safety.
Yeah. So again, uh, I really, I asked Will to do some research because again, it's kind of really two things. Fire safety and what, what can we do to help protect the town? But also are there things we could do that would help people either keep their insurance or get a discount on insurance just financially? And, um, you know, fire prevention, it's one of those things we could spend a huge amount of time and money on. And it's really trying to figure out, um, what's the right investment? What's, obviously it's critically important. And are we debatable more ordinance that we just talked about is kind of our first step. That's some real enforcement. So, you know, that you can see in your report, have some information. I think the city can certainly play a role in helping to get more information out there. But there are other programs and things where we could be more active. It will require some work and, and money from the city. You know, that would require ordinances and, and, um, reporting and continuing to do some things. And so this is really a first conversation with you guys tonight to see, you know, how you, what you guys think about some of this stuff. If you, if you really want us to pursue certain things, we'll probably work on a work plan, bring it back. And that's kind of the high level of kind of what this is about. And then again, Will, if you want to go into some of the details.
Yeah. So the, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Firewise. Firewise USA is, uh, community ran, um, versus, uh, the fire risk reduction community, which FR, FRRC. That's usually Cityland or I'm sorry, City Led, uh, requires policy updates. There are opportunity for grants, um, reduction in insurance rates, possibly. Some insurance companies recognize the certification. Let's see, there's the grant access, um, you get stronger ordinances and then the insurance impact. With the Firewise, because this is a two-part, um, and this is just information. It's not, um, any type of SOP or anything. It's just, uh, information that I gathered. For Firewise, it's typically, uh, it's ran by residents and while the, the city can promote it, um, residents actually take the lead on this. And then, let's see, there are. For the F, uh, there's no, there's little to no cost, um, for the city, um, in terms of, uh, investment there. But like in the short term, what we can do is promote, uh, Firewise, uh, engage the Fire Safe Council and plan for FRRC. And the residence role, um, depends on like homeowner action. So, um, you really have to get the neighborhood involved, uh, for that side of things. And I'm still researching and learning, uh, both. Um, initially it was just Firewise Community. And as I, um, kind of pulled the layers back, uh, saw that it was more of a residential community ran organization that typically partners with the fire district or fire department and not necessarily a, um, city driven. So.
Yeah. I mean, Firewise can be as small as eight neighbors that do this together. They have to form like a volunteer board. And again, it has to be kind of grassroots. We did talk to the Fire Safe Council here in Amador. They are, um, they share staff with the Amador Conservation District, Resource Conservation District. And they could potentially help the city, um, apply for various grants for either fire breaks. I talked to them about the, our weed abatement program. It's something they haven't done before. But they're, they're willing to talk to us. And I think that's one that we should definitely probably follow up on. It's a little bit unusual that, like I said, they like to fund like a big fire break and they will pay for it for a homeowner. With the weed abatement thing, we're really saying, can you give us some funds to kind of jumpstart this program? Because we are going to recover that money. But, you know, we would keep it in the system. We would just keep circulating it, um, as we do more abatement.
Is there, is there, I don't even know if this exists. Is there, whether it's fire safe or fire risk programs? That if a property owner has lost their insurance and has had to go and jump or just say, okay, I'm not selling my house. I'm just going to go without. Would any of these programs or any program you might be aware of that might mitigate that insurance loss? I mean, if, if I get a letter saying, okay, you know, we've determined that, you know, you're in an unsafe area and we're dropping your homeowner's insurance. Would any of these mitigate that loss?
I think you kind of have to end up going with the fair plan.
Well, that's, uh, which is, you know, even more costly in comparison. So the fair plan is actually called the unfair.
Yes. So we've been trying to figure out like, if you look, some people, some people say they'll get like a less than 1% reduction. There is a, a state law that they, if you do certain things, the insurance does have to offer a discount. And so we're trying to determine if it's a significant discount or not. And it seems like it really varies.
I'm even thinking about those that have lost their insurance, that, you know, what, what would they, why would they go through the effort of being part of a community program and going, well, I've already lost it. So I'm, I'm already screwed. So.
Yeah, that'll depend on the insurance company.
Yeah, there, there is no program that'll help people get insurance. If you lose insurance, the fair plan is the umbrella. Uh, unfortunately it's underfunded, more likely than you're going to see significant increases. Not only in your premium, but you're probably going to start seeing surcharges to pay for other areas, uh, for the insurance, uh, going forward. The, the, one of the big problems with these like Firewise communities is that they people form them just so they can get a grant. So you'll get, you know, 10 people together, say off of Nettle Road, say, we're going to go do a Firewise community. So we can get a grant to clean our road. And then I always tell people, just go clean your road. Cause what happens if they don't get the grant, they don't clean the road. They're waiting for somebody else to pay. So these, these grant things have actually hurt us. Cause people are literally saying, why should I go clean the road and pay for it myself? But I can get somebody else to pay for it. And if they don't get the grant, then they don't do the work. So, uh, I've, I've actually proposed to the Fire Safe Council. I've proposed all these that, all these grants should be a performance based. If we come out and clean your road, say on Nettle Road, we clean your road. In five years, it has to be cleaned again and you have to do it. If not, you pay the money back. Uh, what's happening, we're given millions and millions and millions of dollars out there. The initial work's getting done and then no fall off happens. Most fuel breaks, most cleanings have to be done every three to five years. If they're not done, they just go back to what they were. The other, the other problem with fire breaks, fire breaks are a sort of a misnomer. Uh, over the last 10 years, the most, the 34 catastrophic fires that happened in California, California, all of them blew over fire breaks. Cause these embers are going a mile. So the fire breaks are there, but it's going right over these things. So it's not just fire breaks. We have to do cleaning. The biggest thing we can do is, and it's trying to get the Fire Safe Council to rethink. Cause the fires, basically the Fire Safe Council looks at protecting the forest from us. They're not looking at protecting us from the forest. That's basically what their main function is. So what we need to do is go into communities like Sutter Creek, Jackson, Dry Town, Plymouth, Pioneer, Pine Grove. Start in the middle of these communities and work our way out with cleaning and taking care of. That's just not happening. So what we're doing is we're putting these rings around these cities. And if the fire starts on the wrong side of the ring, your town burns down. If you get a big wind, your town burns down. But if you do the work in your town, then you have a good chance of saving that town. And that's, that's where really we have to go back, study after study. As study has shown that if you put the money into hardening houses, it's more beneficial than putting fuel breaks out there in the outside areas and stuff like that. But there's no money in that. Everybody wants this other thing. So it's basically, it's an uphill climb we're trying to do. They try to get these things changed and the philosophy changed. But literally we need to somehow get people responsible for their land, responsible for their property and taking care of it. It is bottom line, what we have to do.
Do we have a cell phone alert system like you were talking about?
Yes, the county has one. Uh, they used to have, it's called, it used to be called Code Red. It is now, they have a new name for it.
I forget, but, um, speaking of that, I, I, I see notices every once in a while from them that they are still really trying to get everyone to sign up for it. So, you know, we can, Tom can, I think he has put that in the newsletter, but you know, maybe we could keep hammering at that.
And you don't even need the app. You could just have to put in your cell phone number. You, you can download the app and put in your cell phone number. You can go to the website.
And that, and that's very beneficial. Uh, the problem is they'd had, I think they had a pretty good saturation with Code Red. Then when they switched over that, I guess they couldn't switch the numbers over. So they had to start over from scratch. And they haven't had as many people signing up as under Code Red. So, uh, somehow we need to get that out there, get people in these systems and everything else. Cause that's, that's our best notification system. Pretty much now, we're going to probably see within five years, no more landlines. They're pretty much going to be gone. Everything's going to be self internet based, based here in the near future.
So on the fire risk reduction community, you know, I, I appreciate this is just a bunch of information. And definitely in our town, there's not a lot of open space. It's the, the homes, especially the 100-year-old ones that, you know, are our biggest risk. But most people don't have the money to harden their homes. Under number three here, it says adopt a comprehensive retrofit code for existing homes. Clearly we can't force anybody to invest the money in doing that hardening. But, um, are codes to, to build and to remodel are for hardened or whatever conditions, right?
Right. One of the, one of the problems is with this, the, what they want you to harden, you know, clearing within five feet of your house, all those different things. If we did that, if we applied those rules in Sutter Creek on Main Street, all those houses over there would be denuded of all their landscaping. So we're, we will actually change the look of Sutter Creek if we impose what they want. Now, the biggest thing, if you, if you ever watch some of these fires, a house will burn down and you look at the landscape and the landscape is fine. So the landscaping isn't usually the issue. As long as it's watered and taken care of, it's not, it's not, it's not going to burn. It's fine. The issue is all the, if we have fires coming in, they get head of steam and then they ember wash into the cities. That's our issue.
Right. I wasn't talking about the, the, um, defensible space stuff in town. I meant more, and I thought that the comprehensive retrofit met the, the fire resistant roof and it, you know, all of those things.
Yeah. So again, if we did that and somebody went to get a building permit, they would have to follow the retrofit code. So it, it would have cost, uh, for people, um, and it is for existing homes, not for new construction.
So most, most of our homes have classy roofs already. Uh, classy roofs have been required for many, many, many years.
Yeah.
So there's very few houses that don't meet the classic roofing and stuff.
Bet mine doesn't.
Yeah, we haven't gotten into details. This program, they have a, they have like a menu and you have to do so many of the things to qualify. I don't know if the retrofit is required or it's just one of the things you.
Well, it seems pretty impossible for us to enforce, but I guess my point was, you know, if we could just.
Well, so I'm telling you Claire, like if somebody came in for a building permit, they wouldn't get their permit unless they did it. That's how, that's how it gets enforced in the building codes.
And it's already in our building code.
No, no for the retrofits.
So example, some of the things we did like a gold rush, we required all metal fencing, we required cement boards on the outside, cement. Everything was sprinkled. Uh, we required a bunch of things upfront for those subdivisions. So if they did build, and that was 20 years ago almost. If those were built, we would protect them. The other thing we required is all open space had to be managed by the fire district. Either through burning, watering, cleaning, running cattle, whatever. Cause one of the big, one of the big problems is in Santa Rosa was example of this. In Santa Rosa, they had big old, you know, strips of houses with 100 acres of open spacing between the houses. And the open space was just left to go wild. And so then all of a sudden you get a fire in the open space and now you got a bunch of matchsticks around that open space. Open space is okay to have, but it has to be managed. You can't just leave it. So if we do open space stuff, we have to manage it. We have to clean it. We have to burn it, whatever we have to do, we have to manage that aspect of it. So there's a lot of these things we, we can do. And I think a lot of the stuff we can do ourselves and just take care of it and start educating our citizens about different things. But some of this stuff is, is, it's literally to me, it's a waste of money. Telling somebody you have to upgrade your vents and you have to do a lot of these things, which are not going to be beneficial for them. You know, again, if we can clean around our city, if we basically people start taking care of the property and if you're mentally and physically fit, stay around and help us fight the fires, uh, we can, we can prevent more of these things in the future.
Any other questions, comments? Public?
Well, I think again, it'd be useful to get kind of a read from you guys on how much effort you want to suspend on this. You know, um, do you want us to explore any of this in more detail?
I think it's one of the biggest risks to this community, especially after what happened in LA and how fast, I mean, and even with the, to me, it's, would be significant to figure out how to manage the space around us, because that's what happened in the Palisades. I mean, my dad's neighborhood was a urban looking neighborhood, but it just came in so fast and decimated it. And his house even had a tile roof, which shouldn't burn and it burned entirely. So I, to me, it's a priority for us, especially, I mean, we've seen the wildfires in the last 10 years here.
Like I said, I think one definite step is for us to talk to the Firewise Council and see if we could use one of these grants for our weed abatement program.
And everyone keeps thinking it's silly, but in Folsom, they're starting to do it. They bring in those herds of goats and they're super effective. I mean, they eat everything.
I, I like the idea of supplementing our efforts if we can with Fire Safe Council's help. Because we, you know, we, we've, we've got the, uh, abatement ordinance in place now. I think we should focus our efforts on using that. And then there's definitely the possibility that we're going to run out of funds if we have to. If we end up being the, uh, provider of the abatement.
I think the other one specific thing too is, um, they would, they could potentially, I think they've worked with Motherlode Trust and other locations. So they might fund it in the county. You know, right, right on the city, uh, order there for the Motherlode Trust clearance as well.
Yeah. You, you know, I, I know Dominic, that you were working on, uh, the, the north edge of, uh, Crestview. And that's in a, a land trust, I believe. How's that going, those efforts? Actually, well, Ellie's really interested in doing stuff. The problem is, is when, when I burn inside a creek, I sit there, send a notice out, we're gonna go burn, we go burn the lots off. Once you get outside the city, then all of a sudden you have to get into permitting process and everything else. And it could take up to a year or two to get a permit to go actually do a project out there. So uh, our Senator was trying to streamline that process, process. Uh, I don't think it'd end up going anywhere. Uh, cause one of the biggest things that holds us back is regulation. So I, I would love to go burn the whole bypass, uh, Caltrans bypass. That would be awesome to bring that whole thing. Give us another break between the roads. But for me to do that, it's gonna be a long process to go through the paperwork and everything else to accomplish that, since it's outside the city limits.
Would it be possible to hire those goat herds? Cause the, I appreciate you, it works. They do. I mean, they're not easy in Folsom now too.
That's, that's county land. That's the, I mean. Yeah. The only downside of the goats is you have to have a secure fence. Uh, Gary Wood found out about that.
Well, but they have, they have the herds that you can hire and then they bring in electric fences and they move them around. Cause for me, and I'm, thank you for taking care of that neighborhood, because I live up there, but like from a tourism perspective and obviously safety is the priority, but to have this fire scar on that hill isn't very aesthetic. And then it, I, I worry too some nights. And again, thank you for doing it. I know it needs to be done. But it has a tendency to mess up the air quality at night too, sometimes on the warmer evenings. So I don't know if that would be a feasible.
I think that's a small price to pay though, to get that.
But I'm saying if we could transition to using the, I, I'm just like a huge component of the goat herd.
We've actually talked to, Jim was at meetings, we talked about double fencing. Go out, areas like that where you put a double fence in and uh, the Alans actually do it along the bypass. You go out there, there's the Caltrans fence, then about a hundred feet in, they have another fence. And they force their cattle into that, that small area and they literally take it to dirt.
So we can't hire the goat herd?
So that's the idea. That's the same.
It's the same.
It's aren't like people that, this would be like, you bring them in, they eat the weeds and then they go. It's not like people actually live there and have it.
Well, what happens is they force them to that small area to protect the rest of their food. And then once they eat it down, then they move them into the other, because they know if they get a fire from the road, it's gonna take all their food out for their cattle. And so, and that's how farmers used to manage their land. Ranchers used to manage their lands and with that, a lot of that ability was taken away from them. Used to be if a rancher can go out and burn his thousand acres off, you knew that, you can just go out and burn your land off in the, in the fall. And so you get a good, next, next year you get a crop of grass. But now you can't do that. They've really regulated people down the ability to do things like that. So I think though, all those are part of it. Burning is part of it. Uh, livestock's part of it, you know? We don't really have a, a logging issue here, but logging is a big issue that needs to be done up country. All those are parts of the same thing. Fire breaks are part of it, you know, cleaning, hardening houses is part of it. Our problem is, is we spend, we spend ten times as much money fighting the fires as we actually do preventing the fires. And unfortunately, every time you spend a dollar per fighting the fire, there's no return on investment for that. Cause it's basically, it's spent. Whereas if we can just keep spending more money towards the fire prevention, that's a return on investment back to us. And it's just, again, it's a mentality we have to change out there. It's not, uh, fire prevention isn't sexy, you know? People like to see, oh, let's go fight fire, run up and down the hills, everything else like that versus hey, let's just take a goat herd out and clean the property and stuff, right? So there's not a lot of incentive in it. But study after study after study from all these different places have all come back to the same thing, saying we have to do this. We're not gonna get out of this by buying helicopters and airplanes and putting more fire engines out there. The only way we're gonna be getting out of this is through fire prevention, period. So all those ideas work. All those things are viable. And I, I think there is uh, uh, the supervisors was at the meeting about a month ago. They gave me a paperwork and I'm actually going through it. There's supposedly another billion dollars that's gonna be allocated to the foothills for projects. And we might be able to do something like that. Do you guys have a grant writer in-house?
Yeah. Do you know the name of the program?
I'll, I'll get it for you. I have it at the station. So it's, it was given to me by one of the supervisors. And it's, it's a, it's a, up, basically it's in the Sierras. And so it's something we might be able to get money for that. And that's something we, you know, I'm not a big grant guy, never have been. But I think if the city doesn't have a grant writer, we might wanna look at, maybe jointly looking at a grant writer that works on a commission. So if you find stuff, you get, because a lot of these grants, they'll actually, the commission will be paid out of the grants.
Yeah, yeah. We have a contractor that can work that way.
Okay. Cause yeah, cause there's, there's some money out there. Uh, it's just, there's a lot, every time you do these, it's take, you have reams and reams of paperwork to do. And uh, I don't, I, I know I don't have the time to sit through all the paperwork. I don't have the patience either. So uh, but yeah, I think there's, there's ways we can do it. I think we, if we concentrate back on ourselves doing these things, some of the things are gonna be helpful. I think the Firewise is not as helpful as, what's the other one? The Safe. That one actually might be more beneficial to us than the Firewise communities. Cause that one we actually run, the Firewise communities, cause I actually started the process through Firewise until they, they said, you can't do this. It has to be done by the citizens. So uh, yeah. So I think that one might be one we'll look at. Uh, I'll get you the information on that object and see what we can do.
Are we good? All right, Will again, mentoring city facilities.
So uh, we uh, got in contact with this company, um, that is an online platform called Facilitron that basically streamlines the uh, booking process for uh, public spaces that we have available to the community. Because our current process is, seems a little outdated. Um, so Facilitron, I mean, everything's online. We can have a, a link on our website. It takes you directly to their platform. It can have um, all of our facilities that we have available to the public. It could be down, down to just kitchen space. It can be, you know, the parks, um, some of the rooms that we have at the grammar school, um, or just parts of, of a building that they, they wanna rent out. And it's, it's flexible. You don't have to, to walk into City Hall and um, in person and go through that uh, process that we've had in place. But there's, it's a pretty nice system. There's other communities uh, near us that all, also utilize it. And it, it basically brings, um, I mean, potentially a lot of outside um, visitors to, to maybe come in and utilize uh, some of the space we have. And there's no upfront cost. It, it streamlines the booking process and, and any record keeping. It doesn't replace the in-person uh, process, but, so that's still an option. But for those of um, people that like to uh, utilize, you know, all online platforms like most of us do, it's nice that you can just click on it. And there are some, let's see here. They've, they've partnered with like school districts and cities, um, sports compounds and um, let's see, there's, it, it just, it just allows possible revenue stream for the, for the city. And it makes it a lot easier for the public to be able to do that. Um, cause right now, I think, I mean, the process of, we have, we have a lot of space, I mean, in the grammar school that I don't think a lot of people know about. One of the nice things is we just um, installed a wifi network. My guest and a main uh, wifi system in there, um, which is, is great for people. I think that's the kind of frustrating for any um, people that come to just wanna have an event.
So is there, they come in and uh, they, they photograph the facilities. Uh, there's no initial upfront cost. Are you committed to a, a contract where, for a certain amount of time?
Yeah. Initially, there's a one-year commitment and then it's a month-to-month basis.
Okay. So is there a, a, like a base fee or is it strictly a commission?
It's commission. Um, let's see, ten percent commission.
Okay.
It's a minimum of five thousand the first year. So if you rent less, you still pay the five thousand.
Oh, okay. So there is, there is a minimum.
Yeah, right now we're renting thirty-five to forty thousand. So we.
For a year?
A year. Uh, so we'd have to get an additional ten thousand to make it worthwhile.
Just to break even on the co- the cost of the.
But we could try it for one year.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the exposure, it, it'll be the trick, the trade-off there. If, can we rent it more than we would have otherwise?
So it's five thousand for the first year and then ten percent?
It's, yeah, ten percent, just commission and doesn't include deposits or fixed fees. It's, you know, purely the, the rental fee.
And uh, you, okay, we, you mentioned Facilitron. Are there others that, that do this and uh, do we have a, are there competitors that we can check on?
Compare.
We haven't really found one. These guys seem to be cleaning up.
It's a unique little industry. Yeah.
Yeah. So could this be added? You had budget impact. Charts ten percent. Cost can be absorbed, passed through, shared with online renters. Would, do you consider, or is it considered, I'm not saying to, but to add like a processing fee to the rental process that would help offset this cost? And if so, would that maybe actually be a deterrent going, oh, with all these fees and everything, no, I'll just find someplace else.
Well, I think.
If I know that's a fine.
Right. I, I think there's some flexibility on that. I mean, we were going to review our current costs for rentals and rental space. I think there's, I think there's a lot of opportunity um, for adjusting prices and um, I think it's, it's just a, it's a good platform, great marketing. We can adjust pricing how, however we'd like to. They come out and do, you know, the photos and any add-ons. There's no like additional costs associated with it. It's just strictly their commission that they're looking for annually or, you know, um, for that first year.
Yeah. But separate from the software, it's really more generally about how do we market our stuff better? We should look at like the terms. So, you know, Will and I have been talking about, could we just make the kitchen available on its own? I, I met with a wedding planner today who, and we walked around and, and so having maybe some area wedding planners, make sure they know about our properties and they can market and help sell them. It's kind of interesting. She got really excited about the space along the creek where the picnic tables are behind my office.
Yeah.
And she thinks it'd be great for ceremonies there. And then people could come in here for reception or they could.
Use the kitchen.
Go across the street to Bubbles. Like, I guess these, the walking weddings are becoming a thing and go to Hotel Sutter for lunch or dinner. So um, if, I think if we have more flexibility in how we rent things.
Talked to um, Tracy Burkner from Visit Amador too, because they're trying to book midweek stuff for like corporate meetings and speak up for that.
So it, it sounds like there might be some opportunities to, to increase our, our rental traffic that, that uh, would not require Facilitron. Do you wanna maybe pursue that first?
Well, I think the software, the other part of this is actually frees up staff time that they can work on other things, you know?
It's a pain to, it, it's a pain for you guys and I, I've done it. It's a pain to rent a space from the city.
Right. And the website, the information's there, but it's kind of a mess. There's forms and everything.
You gotta call eventually anyways, instead of going online and.
Yeah. And anyone that's really looking, if they can book something else online.
Kind of like Airbnb for.
It doesn't sound like there's a lot of downside, I'm, to, to using their facilities. Now you said that it was uh, uh, five thousand the first year. Say, okay, so you, say your rentals were just flat thirty-five thousand, so that you, you covered thirty-five hundred of the five thousand. So you gotta cover the fifteen hundred. And then in the second year, it's strictly uh, ten percent?
Yep.
Okay. So that sort of covers their initial setup cost.
Exactly.
So, okay.
And they also have um, a lot of pricing information. So I think they can help us validate our pricing.
Not to be Debbie Downer, but the, you know, I'm, I'm looking at you Derek. The big, the big pain in the neck is, you know, when you get to the point and you're having your kid's birthday party and you're gonna maybe rent in here and you get to the insurance part and then you say, heck with that, I'm just gonna go to the park. Um, because no matter what you do, even if it's a teensy tiny thing in any of our buildings or any of our places, you have to get a two million dollar insurance policy, which you could do through your homeowners, but if you don't own your home, then you gotta ask mom and dad to do it. You, you know, it's, it, it's a stop for a lot of people. And I mean, I understand that we need to have it, but is, you know, some functions, i- is there any way to, to a- adjust that to the, to the size of the event or the?
We, we, we can talk to our, I mean, you guys just approved the MOU tonight. A lot of that is driven by the MO, you know, is, is driven by our municipal carrier. And they, you know, I, I mean, at the end of the day, if something happens in a city facility and somebody sues the city, it could be for a million dollars. I mean.
Doesn't matter what it is. Yeah. And I know from my policy, that word event triggers everything. If it can be five people or a hundred people.
So there's nothing to prevent, if somebody wanted to, to uh, have their wedding ceremony there in the park, uh, we couldn't, we couldn't stop them, could we? Do they have to rent, do they have to rent the park?
Public area, everybody could walk through their reception. If we created an area that we rented.
Walk through wedding.
They would basically be getting a.
I mean, I like the idea.
Getting it private for a period of time.
I, I've, I mean, it's, you can rent, well, at least, I, I've done it myself. You know, you're supposed to rent the picnic tables from the city in the park to have your Little League party or your birthday party or whatever. But rather than that, you just send somebody to sit on the table from ten o'clock in the morning on, so it's yours and you have it.
And yeah, we're, we're talking about, you know, a hundred and fifty people showing up for.
Well, but, but we're not, because if you actually went through the process to rent the tables, to have your Little League party for eighteen people, you still have to get the two million dollar insurance policy.
Right. And again, I think for that small group, not just showing up and not getting the insurance and the city's protected and, and the person's protected, it's probably a better way to do it.
I like the fact that it points out on how flexible, more flexible we can be. And to really market what we, what we have and get the word out.
And we're gonna keep, you know, the nonprofit pricing. This isn't to charge a lot of the nonprofits that use our space now. It's really, it's for outside events and things.
You can even do resident discounts. I know that um, in the Shenandoah Valley, some of the wine rates will actually offer residents of the Shenandoah Valley a discounted rate.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
I think for some things, we have three levels, like nonprofit, private and then commercial. It's like a different price.
Just, uh, just an idea. I was just listening to you guys. Um, I know, so I believe all the other cities probably have the same situation they have to deal with. Are they doing this program at all?
Not yet.
So the reason I bring that up is maybe, you know, cause I know the Chamber of Commerce is always looking for funds to help do stuff, bring things in. Maybe this might be something where the cities can get together, the Chamber of Commerce, maybe the Chamber of Commerce could run a internal program and then the money gets recirculated back in the county rather than leaving the county and going to some other company outside the county. Just a food for thought.
I did just talk to them last week about um, not booking, but publicizing, you know, our spaces for us and with us.
They, they might be interested in it, especially if all the cities jump in. It's just an idea.
Worth looking at, I think.
Yeah.
Anyways, this is really just information for you guys. It's uh,
Yeah.
You know, unless it's, unless you were jumping up and down saying, no, don't do it. We're, we're planning. You know, unless it's, unless you were jumping up and down saying, no, don't do it. We're, we're planning to move ahead.
Uh, okay, are we?
Yeah, good.
Good, good. Public, we're good. Mayor and council member reports. Does anybody need a quick break or can we power through? Power through. Susan. Report. Julia.
Nothing.
Jim.
No, I want Dominic while you're here. I apologize for missing the, the, uh, last meeting, the fire district meeting. Oh, it throws me when, it throws me when, uh, the, when, when that third Tuesday comes so early in the, I, I keep it. I'm always expecting it to be like tomorrow because we're having our meeting the third Monday. And it just happened that I missed it. So I apologize.
Just FYI, we sort of got, we sort of lucked out the other day. So we've been all, we always look for equipment cause most of our equipment's twenty or thirty years old, but at least we can work on it. So, uh, we were looking at an engine from Eldorado Hills that they're looking at selling. It's a two thousand and three. So it's only twenty-two years old. Pretty good shape, everything else. So, uh, it was brought up to us to look at. And we just so happened by having the green waste bin, a gentleman came in to use a green waste bin and was asking us about it. And then in the process, he actually offered to donate twenty thousand dollars towards a purchase of the engine. Yes. So I, I'm actually working with his accountant for a tax write-off so he can, uh, basically he's only give us twenty thousand to help pay for it. Luckily for us, the engine's gonna cost twenty thousand dollars. So it's gonna be a wash bless.
Green waste bin.
Yeah.
Yes, I know, exactly.
Just briefly from the foundation, uh, we did have the Chamber of Commerce mixer last week at the grammar school and, um, the, the foundation hosted it and paid for it. We had a wedding planner, their event planner, and I, I think it's, you know, a gr- great move for everybody. I'm not sure what it did for the foundation, but, um, it definitely marketed the space to people around the county. It was really positive. Tom was there.
That's the woman I met with her. She drove up and we walked all around.
Yeah, she's been kinda on fire about it, but also the, the chamber staff. You know, it'd been a while since they'd seen all the things you could do and it, it was very cool. The, the event lady actually staged each room of the, of the schoolhouse for something. Like one room was set up like a wedding, one room was set up like a class. You know, they used the kitchen so you could see. It was very neat. Um, I guess, oh, and, uh, uh, probably talked about this for years, but the foundation's finally about ready to, uh, put out their first historical video for the historical video project where you could go through town and, uh, zap a little QR code with your phone and see a video about where you are and what you're looking at. So the first one's the Monaverty store. Yeah. And it's fireman's ball time and that's it. Uh, city attorneys report. Future agenda items. Anybody? Nope. Information and correspondence. Did you have something, Jim?
Are we talking now about all the, those reports that we got? So, the, uh, Mason, is it fair to just maybe kind of take everything that you put in there with, as a grain of salt right now? Because those numbers were just wild. I mean.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I, I really was putting them in there for you guys to give feedback on anything you might wanna update, like layout wise or. I know you had.
I would like to see more, like on the, the check, uh, register. Uh, there's no, you have no idea what, whether it was for insurance costs or whether it was sewer related or, you know, where coding that we had would get on the old one.
So you do want some kind of detail on what, what's paying for each? Cause I thought we wanted to shrink it down, make it a little more simple, but if we wanted to expand on these ones, I can.
Well, I'm coding on.
Same category?
Yeah, categories of, yeah.
Okay.
Whether it's public works, sewer related, uh, I think insurance, to know that it's insurance or, or personnel costs, something, you know, just some.
Okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, I, I kept these, it's pretty summary only, just to start simple and then we could expand if we needed to. So I'll look into seeing if we can't just have some, I, we do try and title them at the top right. We've been trying to title them with the department. So PW for the first page, public works. So you could see, you know, these ones were primarily, primarily for Dan.
And then I, I think you're gonna need to go through and, and give us an explanation on the pooled, how the, what we're seeing on that pooled.
Yeah, that's similar to, was replacing the cash flow report that we would usually see. Um, I was gonna say that the labels on those are super vague. They're all the same. You really have to look at the claim on cash, um, fund number to see kind of what, where the money's at.
I quit reading it because it didn't mean.
I mean, here, there was one, uh, miscellaneous bookings, police department.
I saw, I had that circled.
A twenty-nine thousand percent.
Yeah.
Change, you know, the, I saw, that's why I said we'd take a grain of salt until these numbers get.
Yeah.
Fixed, but.
Could, could, actually, that be explained? Cause I had that circled and marked. Um, what that means, the twenty-nine thousand dollar percent?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand percent.
Could you give me a page number?
Page ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine.
Right in the middle.
Oh, you know, Jim had talked to me about this. I think we just misposted an expense to that. We were needing to move it to a different category. I think it was actually, um, dispatch.
There's, there's a lot of percentages that, uh, things that don't make, didn't make, seem to make any sense, but to me, but. So maybe a tutorial on, down the road, I'm gonna read that.
Yeah, and.
How to interpret it.
I re- we, I wanted to get these out to you guys. Just, I really was looking for format, layout and like description kind of, um, ideas from you guys about how could we, can make these clearer? Um, cause I know these are a little more customizable than what we had before. So I started with something real basic and we can try and expand from here. Um, so I'm sound, so it sounds like pooled cash report. I was looking at updating the titles on those to have the fund name on them and that would really clarify. Um, instead of just all of them being the same name. And then, um.
And then can you show them subtitled on the, by account, like QuickBooks does or no?
Well, so these are totals by fund. Technically, these are totals by fund. So you'd say, you know, fund one might have, has.
I'm looking at the different accounts.
Oh. Which page are you looking at?
It's, I'm trying to figure out which one I downloaded. Um, it doesn't matter. I'll go look at the other one, but this one is just the list that's like. The long list.
Yes, and the AP dispersment reports has a detailed option to provide, you know, where we're paying for, what, from where. So we can do that.
Okay. And you, you haven't entered the new budget, right? So like the numbers versus budgets.
Working on the new budget, entering it in. I, um, it's one of those things they didn't really train me on when we were building it out because we didn't have a budget to enter yet. But now that we do, um, I'm trying to find time with our conversion analyst to build, to show me how to build it in there. Um, so once we have it built to, you know, we'll be starting from zero and see the activity grow from here.
I guess the one I was looking at, it says detail versus.
Yeah. Yeah.
Account summary.
Detail versus budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so they do it by fund subtotal. They do a fund total at the bottom and they do it. I think they do a revenue and expense total at the bottom too. Yeah, they do revenues and then expenses separate. So it's kind of combining the old expense and revenue reports. It's putting them all in the one against budget. And then it does a total at the bottom for each fund. So yeah. Take this with a grain of salt for now, just because, I mean, even some of this data, we brought it over in June. And so, you know, all the claim on cash accounts show a zero starting balance. It's cause it all got brought into June. So like, it's an annual total, but it's all just says it's in June, it all happened in June. So it's kind of funky looking, but, um, I'm just really looking for, if you guys want format changes, label changes. So I have some notes I can take and bring back and work on. So.
Well, I don't know if people, if it's easy for you guys to read, but to me it would make more sense to have like all the specific information and then the total, but instead of having to scroll all the way down, but it's either whatever works for everyone.
Yeah, let me, let me fiddle with it. Um, Tom and I took a look and we were, we already had some ideas, but we, I wanted to get them to you guys, just sound, sounded out to you guys and see what you wanted to, so.
I didn't mean to spend a whole lot of time on it, so.
No, no, I, I just, I want, I wanted feedback. That's why I brought it, cause I know this is brand new to us. And so I'm still setting up, I can set defaults. So once we have one we like, I just said as a default, I can run it and we can bring it. And it's not a ton of work on my end, cause it used to be a ton of hours just to get them formatted into a format that we could at least sort of read. So if I can find a sweet spot, I can save it and we can just do this a lot easier going forward. Okay.
Good.
I appreciate the feedback. That's what I wanted. So thank you.
Thanks, Mason.
Um, Dan's not here, but I had a couple of questions on public works. Tom, maybe you could take a swipe at. Uh, in light of the budget constraints, the city will be working on excavating your Eka Street with the help of Campbell Construction. What does that mean? Was somebody else gonna do it before and now in light of budget constraints, we're gonna do it?
Yep, exactly.
Great. Okay. And then, um, affluent disposal. It looked, at least when this was written, like Campbell hadn't accepted the bid and they have to by July tenth. Did they accept the bid?
Yep.
Cool.
We got it all signed off.
That's all I had.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else, we are going to adjourn into closed session after a recess.